All right, let's call this meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, it has.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner, and I duly call this meeting to order.
I'm sorry, on August 19, 2020, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria VA Code Chapter 37.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tanner, I duly call this meeting to order. The first thing we have on the agenda is our executive session. I don't know that we need to do roll call at this moment.
Yes.
Everyone's here. So I'd like to get a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session.
Second.
Second, Ms. Campson. Ms. Tanner, please read.
Demotion. Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, money, resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees, et cetera, of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session will be the personnel docket of B consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are briefing by the staff and consultation with counsel concerning the matters identified above. Ms. Basin?
Hi.
Campson?
Hi.
Lanton?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Jordan?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi. Okay, we'll go, I sent, I emailed all of you a link to the executive session. So you should have received it earlier today. Okay, could I get a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that we come out of closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Second, Ms. Campson. Karen, please call the question.
You don't already read the resolution?
I read the resolution, yeah, sorry.
Okay. It resonates with the executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Virginia Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in this motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basin?
Hi.
Campson?
Hi.
Lanton?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Jordan?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi. Would you like to go ahead and take roll call? If it's on the agenda?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Basin?
Present.
Campson?
Here.
Lanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here. Okay, thank you. Okay. Call this meeting to order. And I'm sorry, I'm playing with between screens. And I'm having some difficulty seeing some things here. Okay, well, okay, so. Okay, so good evening, everyone. This is our first school board meeting of the 2020-21 fall semester. At our August 12 meeting, NPS administration presented the reopening plans for this school year. And to say that a lot has happened since that meeting is an understatement. Between professional development training, virtual learning, skills for parents, and technology distributions, our NPS teachers and administrators have been hard at work. Fall semester began on Tuesday, September 8. The Norfolk Public Schools have completed only one week of online learning. Thank you to the many parents and guardians, teachers, and community members who have shared their experiences. We appreciate your communication and we hear you. Some of my school board colleagues and I are parents of NPS students and are experiencing online learning just the same as all children in our district. Today, Dr. Birdsong and her staff have prepared a presentation to explain how the online learning classes are going so far. So, Dr. Birdsong, please take it away.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts with you prior to our first presentation this afternoon. First, let me officially welcome everyone to a new school year. I'm so pleased to be able to share with you that Norfolk Public Schools had a very smooth opening of schools last week. During my site visits to several schools on the first day, I saw firsthand the excitement and eagerness for the start of a new and quite different school year. I observed administrators and staff who were ready to take on this new challenge with big smiles, of course, all behind their mask. I know that our school division did a tremendous job with the launch of our virtual learning platforms for our nearly 30,000 students. And we will hear more in a few minutes about all the details associated with the reopening of schools from our division level chiefs. But I just want to point out that this school year has started unlike any other year in the history of Norfolk Public Schools. And this year, like no other, we truly require our proverbial village working together to ensure equity and excellence for for each student. I could not be more proud of our NPS village, which is comprised of our dedicated teachers, amazing administrators, and our extraordinary staff, including our custodians, school nutrition staff, and our office teams who are working on the front lines. And I must give a huge shout out to our thousands of parents and guardians who have shown tremendous, and I mean tremendous, flexibility, creativity, and patience as they continue to support their children's learning while at home. I know firsthand what it takes because I too have a child learning at home, and some days I know it can be quite challenging. Parents and guardians, I cannot thank you enough for all that you do to support your children's education during this unprecedented time. But perhaps most important, I want to recognize our students, we who have stepped up again to the challenge of learning at home with even higher expectations and accountability for them during this school year. Our students are learning invaluable lessons in grace and grit as they get settled at home for class every morning, turn on their devices, and engage with their teachers and fellow students in classroom settings none of us could have predicted a year ago. I believe that our reopening of schools shows the magnitude of our talent, skills, knowledge, and abilities to do whatever it takes to succeed. Our central office leaders and building principals and assistant principals spent countless hours planning and implementing our school reopening. It is to their credit that our school reopening went so smoothly, and I'm so proud of our work together, which you will now hear about. First, Dr. James Poehl, our chief academic officer, will share highlights of our professional development opportunities, special education programs, the plan for student assessment, how we're serving our students of equity and opportunity. And in addition, we have a video presentation of the day in the life of a Norfolk Public School student. Next, Dr. Mike Cataldo, our chief information instructional technology officer, will share our strategies to support parents and guardians, students, and teachers in using our virtual learning platforms. Dr. Cataldo will also provide an update on the status of our device distribution process and on our new virtual scholars academy. Then, Dr. Lanell Gibson, our chief schools officer, will present an overview of our school's reopening preparations, including social emotional learning supports for our students, our childcare programs, our health mitigation plan, as well as some data on our additive transfers. In addition, Dr. Gibson will cover security assignments to support child nutrition services, teachers working from school sites, highlights from Operations Day, which consisted of professional development opportunities, our administrators' PD schedule for the upcoming year, and efforts to enroll 100% of our students. After her presentation, Mr. Tim Billups, our chief human resources officer, will discuss our teacher retention rates and virtual recruitment strategies and will provide a staffing update. And finally, Mr. Rick Fraley, our chief operations officer, will highlight activities from our operations areas to include the delivery of PPE to all of our school sites and the most up-to-date news on our school nutrition program, which I am certain, I'm very certain our parents and guardians will appreciate. After each chief's presentation, we will be happy to address any questions the board may have in that particular instructional or operational area. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Poehl to get us started with our first presentation. Dr. Poehl, you're on mute.
Go back to it.
I'm always so good about that, and I hit the wrong buttons time, my apologies. So that concludes my presentation.
Don't try it, Dr. Poehl, it's too early.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon with my colleagues, Dr. Cataldo, Dr. Gibson, Mr. Billups, and Mr. Fraley, to share information with you relating to the reopening of schools for the 2020-2021 school year. Did we lose the presentation by chance?
Seemed to have.
Ms. Tanner? There we go. Here we go. This afternoon, we'll each share information relative to this year's opening within Academic Affairs, Instructional Technology, School Leadership Development, Human Resources, and Operations. Within Academic Affairs specifically, I'll be reporting on professional development, special education, the assessment plan, our equity and opportunity students, as well as giving a glimpse into a day of a virtual classroom. During our August report. There's that gray box is back again.
All right, hold on one second, Megan's trying to fix it. The system froze. Hold on, stop share completely. Which one of the two is a PowerPoint slideshow? That one right there, return to school. And how about this one? Get rid of that. Okay. I don't know how it disappeared.
And just so the board knows, we use this as like teachable moments for our teachers because we, we've been preaching flexibility, you know, all summer and, you know, since the start of the school year. So we're trying to model what we expect, flexibility from all and patience.
I think we need to get the cue cards because my child's teacher has a microphone cue card and then a crazy person cue card when the computer isn't not acting right, and then I can't see, I need help cue card. It's very good, it's wonderful.
All right, I think if we can go to the next slide, Karen, Ms. Tanner.
We apologize, our system keeps freezing. Let me close it just one moment.
Dr. Martin, I just recommend we proceed, we have, each of us on the board has access to the presentation, and if we can just continue to move forward while they work on the technical difficulties.
That's fine. Dr. Poehl, are you able to do that?
Absolutely. I'll just let you guys know when I'm going to the next slide so you guys know kind of what we're looking at. And then, Ms. Tanner, if we can just have the videos ready when we get to those slides, I think that would be most helpful that way. I think you guys have those separately as well.
Thank you.
All right, so we should be on the slide that says professional development. The first one that says professional development. So during our August report, we shared our professional development plan, which included sessions that started in August and progressed through the fall. This afternoon, I'd like to share a few specifics around our new teacher orientation and our summer leadership institute. The new teacher orientation served 286 new teachers and a total of 303 participants. The online platform boasted a virtual comments area with emojis developed to assist in introducing everyone to the new teachers. The sessions were all level and court-specific and designed around covering topics such as virtual Virginia, Canvas, Zoom, synergy, teaching in a virtual setting, engagement in the online world, as well as learning about the division's health mitigation plan. New teachers had the opportunity to collaborate with each other as well as to meet with their school leaders and work with a variety of division-level support personnel. Additionally, NPS was one of the few divisions in the region to successfully pull off a fully virtual summer leadership institute. With over 200 participants, including all principals and assistant principals, this two-day institute had 18 unique session topics to allow participants' choice and to cover mandatory topics. There is even time built into the schedule for school teams to meet and organize their thoughts around the information being shared. At this time, I'd like to share a quick video about both the summer leadership institute and the new teacher orientation.
This summer's leadership institute was very successful, as evidenced by the feedback we received from principals. Most of our ratings were fours and fives, which let us know that the sessions we provided to them were engaging and relevant and helpful in getting them started. This year, because of the pandemic, our planning for summer leadership institute began very late. However, we were able to complete a needs assessment with our principals and ask them specifically what they needed to start the year. From there, we went on to plan for our technology needs in terms of leadership to show our principals what teachers would be doing on Canvas and Zoom. We also had other principal experts share what they would be doing in their communities to reach out to families to ensure that the school year started with every student ready to start virtually. We discussed the struggles that we perceived people would have learning to Zoom in classes and be engaging for students to learn. We also discussed ways to help principals reach their communities. We shared things that principals were doing. Some principals were holding virtual cafes throughout the communities, others held virtual chats. We also had principals and teachers reach out with their device distribution days, as well as with other platforms such as town halls to share and talk with their students and parents.
So the pandemic put us in a very unique circumstance this year in terms of new teacher orientation. We love our face-to-face meeting and welcoming of our new hires, the energy, the music, the instructional pieces, and actually greeting our new hires. So this year, it forced us to take a whole, unique turn to how we would organize everything. We had to totally rethink how we were going to do it. So we sat down and brainstormed and came up with a whole virtual platform that would model and mimic what a new teacher's classroom would look like virtually. So we had interactive bookshelves where every resource that we would have given them in, say, a handout or a face-to-face session, was now virtually placed on a bookshelf, so all it is is a click and a link, and it would take them right to the resources that they would need to be successful.
I'd like to add to the comments that Dr. Gibson had said, when we got feedback from principals, several of them felt very comfortable opening the school year after the leadership institute really modeled how to use Zoom in large session meetings. So taking a look at supports for our students with disabilities, as you may recall, during the end of August, NPS offered parent workshops on various topics supporting our students with disabilities. These sessions varied from topics such as elementary children with special needs in the virtual environment, empowering families for its successful shift to virtual learning in early childhood special education, inclusive practices for secondary students in a virtual environment, and virtual success for the district-wide program and telepractice, making the barriers of distance learning. There were over 150 attendees to these sessions. Due to the positive feedback and overall success of the sessions, we are planning on offering additional sessions during the weeks of September 28th, October 12th, and October 26th. Future session topics will include requests from a parent survey conducted in August that had 885 responses. Additionally, parent workshops to support related services delivered in telepractice will also continue weekly throughout the first marking period beginning the week of September 21st. As we prepared to start the school year, telepractice sessions were developed to support needs with speech and language, physical therapy, and occupational therapy. All HIPAA compliance requirements have been met with a free Zoom upgrade. Lead therapists have reported the following numbers as of Tuesday, September 15. We've contacted 1,433 families to review and set up telepractice sessions. There were, there have been 33 sessions held during the first six days of school as well. Although IDEA meetings never stopped, many were delayed due to the COVID shutdown. Since the beginning of August, we have developed and implemented plans to rearrange stakeholders in these meetings, or reengage stakeholders in these meetings, sorry about that. The collaboration with school leadership development, we're engaging in regular dialogue and weekly monitoring of meeting completion by school. The learning support special education staff are reviewing IDEA meeting completion by schools weekly and following up with billing administrators, case managers, department chairs, and the like to provide feedback. All student special education evaluations that were pending have resumed by appointment in selected sites during the summer. With all buildings now open, we're able to expand to buy appointment evaluations at every school site to assist with shorter completion times and increase completion of evaluations. Ensuring IEP accommodations are being met and implemented, staff have been working with school administrators and case managers to identify any trouble spots and to assist with ensuring that students are connected during the start of the school year. Initial efforts to ensure that our accommodations and needs are met include IEP at a glance and communication of accommodations, goals, and services between special education case managers to general education teachers. This includes conferences between teachers to address, to address questions related to students' needs and gain assistance for appropriately supporting students. We're also focusing on the home-to-school communication expectations and guidance, which includes weekly for elementary and biweekly for secondary. This communication is to include teacher-to-student or teacher-student parent conferences to ensure that our fall virtual school is meeting student and parent needs around communication, clear expectations, and assistance. Finally, speech therapists are collecting baseline information using the speech and language screener, quick take-along, across the district to plan for initial therapies and identify where there are recovery needs based on individual students' speech areas of concern. In order to know of any learning gaps or specific needs of students, it is important to build our assessment plan. Therefore, pre-assessments, formative assessments, and sign-on assessments have been created in order to provide data to drive instructional practice. Data collected at the division level will be shared with teachers and principals in collaboration with the Division of School Leadership Development. According to research conducted by the Council of Great City Schools in June of 2020 on addressing unfinished learning after COVID-19 school closures, I'd like to focus on two points they raised. First, stick to grade-level content and instructional rigor. And I quote from the article, "Given the amount of time and learning loss since schools were shuttered, districts will face a strong temptation to test students immediately upon reentry to school, identify their academic deficits, and reteach or remediate." According to research, both are largely ineffective practices resulting in student disengagement with school and greater inequities in access to grade-level instruction and educational opportunity. Instead, school and district curriculum leader should keep the focus on grade-level content and rigor, addressing learning gaps as needed within the context of grade-level work. Second, identifying and address gaps in learning through instruction, avoiding the misuse of standardized testing. And again, I quote from the article, "Educators need to work to reengage students in school, emphasizing the importance of the school community and the joy of learning. Administering tests too soon undermines both of these objectives. Strong, attentive instruction with embedded formative assessment enables teachers to respond to student needs in real time and in the context of grade-level standards rather than defaulting to wholesale remediation," end quote. With these thoughts in mind, as we enter the pre-assessment window, we're working with school leaders and teachers on proper use of the data and how skills should be embedded into the lessons as needed to accommodate new learning. Pre-assessments that we'll be using include the use of star reading in math, star early literacy, the Virginia kindergarten readiness assessment, OWLS, WIDA for Ls, as well as division-created pre-assessments where the previous assessments do not cover. Beyond the pre-assessments, formative assessments have been included into the curriculum. These have been developed to be a part of everyday instruction as a way to inform teachers of their students' knowledge and to assist with planning for lessons as well as additional supports that may be needed for students. Finally, for summative data, unit and benchmark assessments will be utilized throughout the year. Data from these assessments will be analyzed and shared with principals and teachers. These assessments will also be used to report student progress to the VDOE as needed and yet to be determined. Using the data from assessments will give teachers and school leaders needed information on their students' equity and opportunity. Next slide, please, Karen. Beyond the plans already shared for our students with disabilities, principals and members of their staff, including EL teachers, are going above and beyond by going to the community to reengage our English learner students this year. Funding for teachers to go out to the community following a day of teaching has been requested and provided. School staff have all been trained on the use of VoIP, and we're going to reiterate that training as well, our interpreting service to ensure good communication with our EL families. You will hear later in this presentation from Mr. Fraley about how our buses are being used to reach all of our students who have not engaged in learning or who may need technology assistance. Although we do not have a great deal of data as of this meeting, we want to ensure the board and the community that teachers, principals, and division-level leaders are working with all to engage all of our students. From personal calls to community visits, we're committed to engaging all students. Just as a point of reference for the first week of school, we had 26,678 of our students logged in as present for lessons with 1,091 no-shows, where principals, teachers, and others have been reaching out in order to verify what needs they may have or to make sure they still live within Norfolk Public Schools' zone. At this time, I'd like to share a video with you about the teacher and student perspective on a virtual classroom. Following the video, I'll gladly pick questions prior to turning the presentation over to Dr. Cataldo.
The district provided a lot of support for us through professional development sessions in both Canvas and Zoom so that we were ready to start the year successfully.
Our school also, at least with my department, those of us who had prior experience were helping others. So we were doing informal Zooms together and working together through making sure that we all knew how to work Canvas and how to do Zoom phone calls, things like that.
So what I do is I wake up, I eat breakfast, brush my teeth, get ready for the day, and then I come in here, get on Zoom, and then I type in the password, username, and password, and the host just has to let me in, and then I'm waiting for the day to start.
Most of my teachers will email me or put into Canvas a Zoom link, and then will join at the time that class is supposed to start. And then, once they'll give it a few minutes to let everyone like trickle in, and then we just start class.
It's going good. All of my teachers, I like, like how they came up with this stuff about Zoom. I like the ways to get in the classes. Like, it's all easy to me.
It wasn't as bad as I thought it would be in terms of the students encountering so many difficulties. For the most part, the students were able to problem solve.
So far, it's been pretty smooth, a lot smoother than the end of last year because they were all new to it, but they've kind of got a plan now, so it's, it's definitely going a lot smoother than it was before.
It's pretty easy. It's just like, there's a ton of kids in the classroom. It's like nerve-wracking, but it's not at the same time because there's like 40 other kids.
We can see them already starting to overcome some of the challenges that we were concerned about. The kids are so resilient. They're learning what they need to do so quickly, and they're eager to, to start the year positively.
My students have adjusted.
My students have adjusted extremely well, a lot better than I thought that they would. Really getting into the swing of things, really able to communicate well what their issues are. They're immediately learning how to do electronic hand signals and be able to chat back and forth multitask on the screen. I think it's really commendable.
And at this time, I'm happy to entertain some questions.
Ms. Campson, and then Ms. Bassin. Ms. Campson, mute.
Sorry, everyone. Dr. Paul, thank you so much for that presentation. It was very well done and very informative. I had a question about the assessments. When will you be administering the STAR test? And how will you do that?
So we have started with training for how to do the STAR test. It can be done online, and the students can do it at home with like a lockdown browser. The window is open, and we're looking to extend it. We've received some feedback. You know, the teachers are really trying to do what we've talked about, using the formative to really see where students are. But we're hoping to have the STAR test completed by mid-October and with an open window now, which is much later than usual. But Dr. Gatale, Dr. Gibson and I are meeting on Friday to confirm that window. Right now, it closes on September twenty-fifth. But we are looking to maybe extend that a little bit to make sure teachers and students are really fully prepared to take that first level of assessment.
So when you say lockdown, is that some technique that uses so that you can be sure that the child is taking the test rather than a parent or something?
And it's so that they'll take them while they're still on Zoom so they can see who's there in some instances. And the lockdown browser helps so they can't go to different tabs and look up different answers.
Okay, so you can be relatively comfortable that the child is taking the test because we're getting it, you're getting it for data, you're not getting it for grades, and sometimes parents don't understand that.
Correct. And we've asked teachers to emphasize that with students as well, that this is really a tool to help them learn, and it's not something where they need to show such high levels of success. We just need to know where they are.
Right, so that you can identify where you do your remediations or your interventions. And it sounded like, and I'm sure I misunderstood, that when we give the STAR, which is a universal screen, that's to identify the areas the child has struggles, and they're going to have some gets behind. But it does, I agree, you're supposed to still be delivering grade-level instruction. But at the same time, you're supposed to, you'll be pulling the children out for interventions that came up on STAR with having deficits in certain areas that they may have not gotten because of the way the year was last year. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct. So we'll weave in that intervention as new content's being learned. What we're trying to discourage is a teacher taking a class and saying, for these three weeks, we're just going to remediate. We want new instruction to carry on, but small groups to support the learning that needs to happen that didn't happen previously. So using that data within instructional practice, just like you said, to really look at how you do your small groups or individualized instruction.
Right, and I agree with all that. It sounds great. I'm just feeling a little concerned about the lag time if we're going to mid-October, that we won't know for sure exactly what are the particular areas to target for each individual child when we're testing six weeks into the school year. And we won't have a baseline in which to measure our progress if we're missing that much time. So could you clarify a little bit again about why you're waiting that long to give the first universal screen?
Well, it's, as I stated in some of the research, if we start with an assessment right away, really, the research is showing that it's going to shut the student right down. So we've integrated a lot of formative assessments into daily instruction so teachers know what students are, that using that universal screener, we do want to get it done early enough. But we also, you know, if there's a teacher who knows when their class is ready, then we want to make sure they have that cushion enough. Like, it's right now, it's set to end on September twenty-fifth, but we're going to meet on Friday to kind of do a final decision on if we're going to extend that window.
I still feel a little concerned about it because having done this myself, I did not find my, that you give it as soon as possible so you can quickly identify areas. Perhaps I can, we can talk about it a little bit more. I don't want to take up the whole evening. I am feeling a tiny bit concerned about the late date of identifying those particular areas that they may have missed. Never thinking and never substituting, always are doing grade-level instruction with kids that have holes in their knowledge. Anyway, you know what I mean. So that's something I'll talk to Dr. Britson about that later. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Campson, just to add to that, you know, when I first heard that, I too, like you, became concerned. But we've been reviewing the research over the summer, and we've heard from our teachers. They have stated time and time again that they need a little more time to build the relationships with their children, and that is so important before we start pushing them to be assessed, be assessed, be assessed. We certainly, all of us have to be a little more flexible. Certainly, this is the first time that we're all experiencing this kind of virtual learning environment in the manner that we are now. I do feel comfortable with the feedback that we're getting from our teachers and principals. You know, that whole, building that relationship is so important, and you know that as a former building principal. And we just need a little more time for that. We know that after the teachers feel comfortable with the children, the children feel comfortable with the teachers, they're acclimated to this Canvas environment, then we can start doing more formal assessments. But we just need a little bit more time. I understand where you're going with that, but we're just asking for just a little bit more time because we've got to be flexible. But please know, initially, when I heard it too, I was thinking, oh, my goodness, do we need to wait that long? But we are building interventions and formative assessments into our daily instruction. So our teachers are really good, and we feel confident that the feedback that we've received from them will provide the best situations for our children so that when it is time for them to be assessed, they're comfortable with the platform, they're comfortable being in the classroom, and we can move forward with that. But I certainly appreciate it.
Okay, and I can see what you're saying, Dr. Britson, because you're right, I was not taking into consideration that this is a totally new experience, and we do need the time to get acquainted with the idea that we're doing virtual instruction. So thank you very much for a little more clarification. I'm starting to feel a little bit better about it. Thank you very much.
On a new platform, too. They're still figuring out Canvas.
Right. I understand, and that's a very good point, and I appreciate you pointing it out to me. Thank you.
Can you go ahead?
Okay, you were on mute. I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions or discussion points. So in regards to special education, I know there was a survey, and you mentioned it earlier, that went out to parents. It would be really nice to be able to see some of the data points from that survey, you know, to kind of help understand what some of the feedback was from our families. You know, I do, as you know, I appreciate the update and everything. And if I heard correctly, there are some evaluations that are being done in person, correct? Now, are there any services that are being provided in person, or are we still?
So no services at this point in person.
Okay, okay, but just evaluations are being done.
Correct.
And what about students who either have a 504 or may need a 504? How are those cases being handled?
The same way where the schools are still calling and reenacting those and moving forward with those as well, using Zoom to hold those meetings as needed. Same process is being used for 504s.
Same process, okay. Okay, and I had questions, or just comments about the assessment, and I'm not going to belabor it because my request was, please hold off on assessments until we know everyone has a device, everyone has connection, all of that, and you've said it. So I'm not going to focus a lot of time on that piece. So a couple other things I'd like to have discussion around is, and also, you know, a lot of this stems from what I'm hearing from parents and teachers as well is the appropriateness of the school day schedule. And that's something that I don't see reflected in this presentation. And I think it's something that warrants a great deal of reflection in terms of how impactful is the current schedule. I feel like we're trying to mimic something that may not be working for our students or for our teachers. And what plans you have in terms of getting information from our families and our teachers, you know, from our different stakeholder groups, to learn what is working, what isn't working, and what those plans are going forward. Because I am hearing a lot about it, and of course, I raised these concerns last month as well as I have concerns about the appropriateness of the daily schedule in the virtual environment as well. So I don't know if you can speak a little more to that.
So we've been getting some feedback on the schedule as well after the first week of school. One, Dr. Gatale, Dr. Gibson and I are meeting on Friday, like I said, to discuss a few of these points. If you recall, when we did discuss the schedule, we talked about the flexibility of change as we move forward. And I think I said, one of the things I'd said, you know, the schedule is September eighth will probably be different than October first, probably different than November first. And those are the discussions we're starting to have now because we're also hearing some issues on screen time where some of our younger ones are on the screens a little bit more often than what we had planned for. So we're really looking at those to see what we can do to restructure in a wise way, know that we have heard some of those as well and discussed some of those points. So we are looking at that as we continue to move on through the schedules.
Okay, and what about, oh, sorry. What about, Dr. Britson, were you going to chime in?
Oh, I was just agreeing with what Dr. Paul was stating. We certainly, when we started planning the schedules, that was one of the conversations that we had. We said, this may not work. We need to go with something. Parents, we're hearing parents, they want more structure. We're going to provide that. Now, you know, as we collect some more data, we will determine what that schedule looks like. But again, as you said, we have to be flexible moving forward. This is something that we've never experienced before. And so we want to hear from our parents, and if more flexibility is needed, we want to be able to do that. So yes, we are evaluating what we're doing and making revisions as we need to. Flexibility is the key. Flexibility and.
Yes, yes. Yes, well, I'm glad to hear that. And what are, is there going to be a structured way of getting feedback from our families and our teachers?
We'll have something in place once we meet Friday. That's one of the bullet points to what we're discussing on Friday.
Okay, great. And the next is the equity and opportunity. You mentioned the number of logins and no-shows. Would you mind repeating what that data is? And if you, just to refresh, I caught some of it, but if you could repeat that, that'd be helpful.
No problem. So for the first week of school, we had twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-eight students who logged in and got online and were counted in attendance or had some communication with their teacher as well because, you know, when we had issues with logging in, as long as they communicated with their teachers, that was acceptable for attendance as we laid out in the plan. And then there, to date, according, if you look at our first day enrollment versus actual attendance, we had one thousand ninety-one no-shows. As of the first week, that principals are aware of, calls are being made, we're, you know, going to the community, trying to find every single student that we can to make sure that they're still actually living where they live and they are supposed to be enrolled and going to school in Norfolk Public Schools.
Okay, okay, great. And what is, so you said, going out into the community. What does that look like?
So you'll see some of that later in Mr. Fraley's presentation. I don't want to steal all his thunder.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
I actually have a question that's very similar, so if you don't mind me asking, and then we'll go to Mr. Clanton. The one thousand ninety-one students who are no-shows that you're working on, can you give us, just to compare to the normal school year, is that a normal amount of students? Or is this different? Can you just give us some context, please?
So I anticipated that question, Dr. Martin, but I did not get the answer soon enough for it. I asked for the last three years' trend data, but I haven't seen it yet, and I do apologize. I'll make sure you guys have that information, though, in comparison to what we've done in the past.
Thank you. I think this is a very important data point to keep up on.
Absolutely.
Thanks for letting me go ahead of you, Mr. Clanton. Go ahead.
Well, not a problem. Thank you, Dr. Martin. I too, first day of school with my second-grade niece and my entering freshman nephew, and I had been video chatting back and forth with them, so they're moving along. But we did, you know, in public comment and some of the things that we received, this question is directly to the instructional piece. I know that they have their Chromebooks, and a lot of their information is on the Chromebook. But Dr. Paul, can you speak to how much additional resources? I know that we have art classes and PE and other things. What other things are we requiring parents to actually get? Or additional things that we might be providing from the school division to support their learning?
So it's a great question, Mr. Clanton. And we had several of our schools, specifically our Title I schools, who had like swag bags to be picked up that had those supplies in them for them. There are different things for art classes that are, you know, that are being required. We did purchase, I don't think it was recorders, and I apologize for not knowing, but we did purchase a small instrument for each child in elementary school as well, so they had something at home for the music class. So we did look at different needs that were unique to be on the paper and pencil that normally would be needed to be able to share that. And as that goes on, we're trying to make sure that we are being able to provide anything the families may need and working through principals to see where there are additional needs. As well as the senior coordinators for each content area are working closely with teachers to make sure that they have their needs. And some of them, we were able to purchase some different software packages just for a year that would work on the Chromebook. Some, even with music, have some recording devices so they can submit different works in different ways to their teachers. But for specific materials, we've been trying to really reach out to see what needs are and to try to meet those needs wherever we can.
Dr. Martin, if I may, as a follow-up. So how much paper is actually being required of parents to print on their own? I mean, is most of their items located in Canvas and online, and they're not really required to print out? And Dr. Paul, I'm just going to dovetail the other question into that one. And if a parent or guardian is finding themselves in a situation that they need one of these swag bags or device, where do they need to go?
So they should contact their teacher first and then the principal of the school for the materials. Our hopes are, with what we've been creating centrally and working with teachers on, is that we're putting as much as we can online so that a student can just do the work on their device at home. Even if it's a PDF that's online, there are methods where they can actually write on that PDF document so that they don't have to print. However, we do know that some are more comfortable with the, you know, a printed document. At this point, we're not providing packets, but if there's a need, we just ask that they contact their school, and we can try to assist wherever we can to provide some printouts of specific materials, not like a packet of learning material, because we're really trying to gear them towards reviewing it online and having it online and doing some of the writing maybe on blank paper to submit back to their teachers rather than printing out items to write on and send back to their teachers.
But if we find ourselves and there's a student who feels better with some hard sheet of paper in front of them, we will make some type of concession, and they just need to contact their schools. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think case-by-case, yeah, case-by-case basis, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Any more questions? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Dr. Paul, to what extent in this first week or so that we've had of school are we seeing the students in our Title I schools participating and getting acclimated to this type of learning? My question is kind of stemming from, you know, there there is a group of students who don't necessarily have the background with technology, as some may. So I'd like to know to what extent are the students being able to participate? So I'd like to know to what extent are the students being able to participate and learn how to use the equipment um for to further their education?
So, uh, Ms. Smith, I think that's a great question, and it's it's difficult to judge fully all of our schools at this point, but I know Dr. Kaito in his presentation has a lot of information around several different ways that we're offering help. Um, and I believe there's even been some, you know, beyond community visits to help close by houses to make sure they have and they can log into what they're doing. And our teachers have really become tech instructors at some point to help them log in. Um, and and part of the numbers where we looked, you know, when we look at our numbers of login across um a- a- across schools or attendance, rather, across schools, it's comparable. We don't, I I I haven't noticed anything where there's one school in particular that has a real high rate of of lack of engagement um or lack of um students who have shown up and been connected with their students. So I think you'll find with Dr. Kaito's presentation, the work that's been done across the division to make sure they're engaged and they understand how to use the technology has been really, really well done.
Okay, and one more question, thank you. When the the assessments are done, will we be able to see that information um categorized by the different subgroups in schools?
So we'll, once we have the data, we'll be able to look at what kind of reporting we can do, but we'll definitely be able to do it by school and and by subgroup because the assessments that we're looking at, we're running through our systems.
And that's going to tie directly to our accountability plan.
Correct.
Okay. Dr. Paul.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Were there any other questions? I don't want to miss them. Mr. Jordan, go ahead, and then Ms. Dr. Gabriel.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to maybe first just ask some clarify questions. On the twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-eight students who logged in, that was a what we have seen in the first week. That's not necessarily a average of what we saw on a daily basis, but throughout the first week, at least, those number of students logged in at some point in time? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, at least once. And I believe the attendance rate on average, when you include all those students, was right around ninety-five percent of those twenty-six thousand students. So they may have missed a day because because whatever the reason may be, but of those twenty-six, nearly twenty-seven thousand students, they, that was during the first week that we made connection with those students, and they participated somehow with learning.
Okay. Um, from a, maybe a central administration philosophy perspective, can you describe um what what is happening school by school? And what it is in terms of a centralized expectation and centralized support system we're providing in conversation with parents and others uh as they were trying to figure things out during the first week? Part of what I was observing, at least felt I was hearing, was that things are can differ to a large degree from one school to to another. I'm often mindful, you know, when I first got on the school board, we had a Great City Schools report on middle schools, and one of the things that it uh challenged us on is being a uh school system versus a system of schools. So in the presentations and in some of the things that I'm observing, it seems to be a lot of things that may differ from school by school, teacher by teacher, class by class. So can you explain to us what the philosophy is around? Whether it's some school by school approach, I know a lot of things are following on principles versus what our expectations are and our support system is uh as a as a school system?
So, uh, I think Dr. Gibson's going to be covering some of that in her presentation as well, but I I think it's fair to say that as we went into virtual learning, that is a question we asked ourselves, Mr. Jordan, is, you know, how much uh, how much freedom do we give each school to go in their own direction versus not? Because you have, with our, with our division, we have students, you know, a a parent can have a student in three different schools um pretty easily, and we want to make sure that that we're on point and understandable to um our stakeholders. So we have really tried to stress centrally that, you know, we focused on Zoom right away, we focused on Canvas. In Canvas, we had some late connections because of the way i- on Canvas aside, connecting with our um our divisions data. Uh, but really focusing on those tools to make sure that we're communicating in the same uh same venue with the schoolwork and the learning, because our our focus on learning is is what's very important to us. Um, as far as any specific question that might come into a school, you know, we always have the 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 principals on that side that that, you know, we've given some guidance through the um Summer Leadership Institute. We actually just had a full day of learning this last week, uh, just this week, rather, on Tuesday, yesterday, for all of our principals on instruction expectations, trying to keep everybody in the same arena of where we go. But as as you're well aware, y- you know, with the amount of schools that we have and the amount of principals and a a little bit of freedom in their areas, sometimes there's a small amount of variance that we do work with. But our centralized philosophy on that is, especially coming into this, that we wanted one platform, we wanted consistency across schools about how everything was delivered. That's why even with the schedules, we wanted to be consistent across schools so so that that um we could make sure that all of our schools are offering the same amount of instruction um as we move forward. And I I hope that answered your question a bit, and I think Dr. Gibson will cover some of that as well um as we move forward in the presentation.
Dr. Burtsong, you gonna?
Yeah, I was just gonna to add that that's a very valid question, and that was one of the primary reasons I asked the board to support me in c- creating the chief of schools position so that there would be um uh more consistency, more structure, more support for schools. And I would have to say, Dr. Gibson has done a wonderful job. We have our chief level meetings, and then we we talk about the vision, support, expectations, and Dr. Gibson follows up in writing to our building principles so that there is some consistency, especially around, you know, utilizing Canvas, you know, lessing lesson planning, um, what the 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 school day should look like and things of that nature. And it's my expectation that our central office team is there to support building principles. While we are all very flexible to meet the needs of specific families, please know that there are very specific things, structures and supports and systems that we have put in place for consistency across the the school division, so we're not operating as a division of schools.
Yeah, I I would just.
Or system of schools. I can appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's important, at least as a, from a board perspective, we just have a good sense of, you know, what that is. I'm sure you and 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 I know board members are hearing from different parents and others, and that's just something that um that I know I hear all the time. And I think the sooner that we can make sure that that's being communicated across the board, the better. Um, next, next thing, just for now, going back to the well, maybe first a quick one, how much, how much autonomy? You all mentioned earlier about students being served on a case by case basis. So I asked a moment ago about uh consistency across the board, but how much autonomy does a uh teacher or an instructor have? If he or she knows that they have a class that um fifty percent of the students are challenged with trying to have sustained connectivity and really need other supports, Mr. Clanton mentioned uh packets or other things, how how much autonomy does a classroom teacher have in order to provide to the student and the family what's necessary for the child to 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 learn?
At the end of the day, we're here to support our children and families. And so we, again, the the key word is flexibility. While we have put systems and structures in place to provide that support for our building a administrators and teachers, we have to be flexible because every, every family situation may be different. So if there is a family who, for whatever reason, maybe they're a a child's parents, they're essential workers, they can't access their learning during the scheduled school day, we put supports in place so that child can access their instruction during the later part of the day. Or if they need extra assistance from a teacher, we put money in our budget to support teachers being able to provide additional instruction outside of their contracted time. Um, I, my approach is meet the needs of the students and the families first. And if we, you know, we're probably um being more flexible than we would be during the uh a traditional school year, but I believe that it's necessary, because at the end of the day, we're here to educate kids. And if they don't have what they need, then we're failing them.
All right, so it'd be fair to say that, you know, within the law and our policies right now, teachers should feel they have the autonomy to do what's appropriate to make sure the children are being successful, and if forgiveness is needed, then they they can, they can come for that later.
Right. As long as their principal, building principal, knows what they are doing and and supports it. Because certainly, there has to be that level of communication, especially during this time.
I'll I'll wait for the rest of the meeting for other things, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Dr. Gabriel, go ahead with your question, and then I'd like to proceed with the presentation.
Sure, and I will make this really quick. Um, uh, Ms. Basin, Dr. Burtsong, thanks for looking into the screen time um item. That was definitely something that I was getting some feedback on. Um, I appreciate that, and yes, you're right, flexibility is is the keyword here. Um, I want to applaud our teachers and staff on their use of technology and their positive attitudes. I have um seen some moments of frustration, but the teachers are cool as cucumbers. And, you know, this first week, it has been challenging, but I can tell you that we're not in isolation. In the medical field, physicians, we had to quickly learn telemedicine, and it was difficult, and the learning curve is high. But we have to just take it in strides. And so I'm not looking for perfection, but I think that our teachers have done an amazing job with having that positive attitude and just trying to help children in in this, in every situation that they are in, they're they're very, very um proactive and sensitive to all the children. Um, I have seen, um, I've received feedback both uh saying that, you know, the experience is going very well, the experience could be made better. Dr. Burtsong and team, my suggestion would be, when you solicit the feedback, and I know that you do welcome feedback and family engagement, my recommendation would that um we try to get um as succinct as possible and maybe consider some type of a um of a of an ongoing process, like a parent will know that every few weeks, they will get a a survey and to look out for it rather than um random check-ins. I think that at this point in time, as much consistency that the division can provide um um to parents, it would just allow us to better anticipate and prepare ourselves for the meaningful feedback that I know that you all are looking for. Um, just a suggestion as a parent, um, I know that when 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 we are kind of helping our kids on the different platforms, the Canvas platform, some of the parents have broken off, and we've kind of made our own parent help center. So that way, we're not distracting the teachers and and asking the teachers questions so that some of the parents can help one another. And that might be a suggestion that you might find um helpful to other um schools or situations. And that way, um, like if they're looking for a password or a worksheet, the the parents can help out with that versus um asking the teacher, because I know the teacher is trying to manage a lot. And that was it, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And now, Dr. Martin, if that's correct, we'll turn it over to Dr. Kaito.
Yes, please do, thank you.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Paul. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board, and Dr. Burtsong. Uh, today for my portion of the presentation, I will be discussing areas under the heading of instructional technology, specifically the newly designed support page, our newly designed virtual learning support, which is Help Desk. Uh, we're calling it, we're changing it to virtual learning support. Uh, resource pages for parents, students, teachers and staff, and also a d- device distribution numbers and the Virtual Scholars Academy update. So as Dr. Burtsong had mentioned, we had a relatively smooth start to the online instruction in Norfolk Public Schools. Our Help Desk, again, virt- virtual learning support, on day one, res- did receive many calls, and about ninety-five percent of those were from students and families needing passwords reset. Uh, well, this is very typical after a long break, very similar to uh forgotten locker combinations after the winter break. Uh, normally, this is handled at the building level by the library media specialist and the I T R T. So at first, we were taken a little back by the number, but we received support from our I T R Ts. Uh, they came down to a cab and they addressed um really all of those concerns with the parents, and we also have additional I T personnel working in the Help Desk area. Um, each day following, we had additional personnel assisting, and we made sure that uh parents also saw on our support page, which I'll be describing and showing you shortly, the three different ways to contact uh the Help Desk, either a phone call, email, or subbing to get tickets. So we have those three avenues and three ways. Uh, we did also experience uh several brief outages, and primarily, they were due to a uh company uh called Securely, which has our web content filtering. Uh, so we, of course, we filter all of the web content to make sure there are no inappropriate sites, and that company actually had a a shutdown on the whole East Coast. So we obviously don't want to have internet uh in our systems up and running when the filtering process has been disabled. So uh that outage um, that outage affected our connect connectivity for a short period of time. We also do anticipate outages throughout the each school year. Um, and, you know, we're focusing right now on our teachers having procedures in place for when students can access the asynchronous work uh that they have on Canvas. So uh generally, asynchronous instruction is less affected by disruptions in service, and so we're working with our teachers to have those um things in place, procedures in place. When my, uh, if my computer's not logging on, if you're not able to log in, please go to this site uh in Canvas, and you'll be able to find asynchronous work. That's the instructions that we're giving um our teachers to talk with their students about. Uh, we also had some students that were not um, that were not having Zoom links. They were not able to um uh access Zoom links because they couldn't log on to Canvas on the very first day. So in anticipation of this, we had our principals communicate the week before school started that uh Zoom links would be coming to them in a variety of ways. Uh, since the first week of instruction, Zoom is primarily used because you're trying to build relationships with students, uh, and you're trying to develop classroom procedures as opposed to uh, you know, real assignments and really getting into the curriculum. Uh, but principals communicated with their families through email, ClassDojo, ParentView, and provided links to those ways if they, uh, students were not able to get into Canvas. Um, now, we asked our parents and guardians if they could contact the principals first when they're experiencing uh maybe if there's some connectivity issues, if it's something that's not an emergency, uh, if they need devices, if they need anything at all, we asked them to communicate with their principals. Uh, but of course, in an emergency, they should contact the virtual learning support at seven five seven six two eight thirty-nine hundred or email at helpdesk@nps.k12.v a.us. Now, since we are supporting now not just the division staff, um, we're also supporting parents and students, we are setting up a mobile virtual learning Zoom, uh, which is also called Softphones. Uh, it's an internet phone number that will connect to the Zoom. And currently, we have sixty lines that we are going to have activated. Uh, we are getting training tomorrow, uh, finalizing training tomorrow with the I T R Ts and network engineers. And starting uh Friday and Monday of next week, uh, we will have sixty additional Help Desk phone lines. So there will be no more busy signals. Uh, we'll be able to handle the multitude of calls that may come up during a password reset time or any other issues that come up. We know parents don't like to hear a busy signal or don't like to be able to connect with somebody. So uh we're going to have that ability. So I T personnel and I T R Ts are going to be providing support, whether they're on or off campus, to everyone needing it. Um, and that's going to be going in again Friday and starting Monday as well. Um, so we're using also the Trending Virtual Learning Support page. There's a trending page that shows most common issues that have been reported to us. So we give uh parents and students kind of a heads up, hey, you may be getting uh in, you know, questions. For example, we have had mostly password resets. And we've also had a MiFi hardware limit message that's been popping up on some of the MiFi's that our families have. Now, this is all clearly labeled and discussed on our Trending Virtual Support page. Uh, basically, that message states that uh um Basically, that message states that that the MiFi is approaching its limit. So just for clarification and for clarity here, our MiFi's do not have a gigabyte limit. There is no limit. And they are not throttled back to 3G after they approach, say, 15 gigabytes or 20 gigabytes. Once they hit a certain amount of data that has been used, what they're doing is they're sending a message. It's a hardware message and it's kind of built into the to the MiFi device from T-Mobile. But there is no throttling back and there is no limit to the gigabytes that the MiFi's have. And again, the MiFi's, one MiFi can support up to 14 devices at a time. So. So the next thing I want to show you, you'll see the next slide, which has what our homepage looks like. It kind of shows you, I think that's the next slide on there with the Canvas. So if you, you probably have that in your presentation, your presentation slides. On this slide, you can see the Canvas information banner. This is circulating on every school's webpage and also on the division main page. You can see with the arrows there, there are three locations that go directly to virtual learning support and teacher, student, guardian support pages. So we made sure to have multiple ways that a student or a parent or even staff member can go on to our division pages or on their school pages and be able to access that information as needed. Then you'll see on the next slide, it shows our instructional technology, our resource pages. We developed four resources, resource pages, one for teachers, students, parents, and then also our virtual learning support. These pages are always going. In fact, from when I prepared some of these and part of the presentation, we've actually added additional slides to those. So if you refresh at home or see it from home, the live site, you'll see there's some additional support documents on there. We've added multiple documents and videos, you know, every week, every couple of days, we add several different as we hear questions and concerns parents or teachers have about how to access something. So we're constantly growing and learning in that area. And then on the next page, you can see, once you do hit that virtual learning support page, there's a Canvas login page, a Help Desk. I'm talking about on the left-hand side here, a student resource page, parent resources, teacher resource page. And the red arrow is for accessing the Help Desk page. So once you click on that Help Desk, you get to this slide here. This slide, you can see multiple areas where support is being provided to that the families can access. There's a help feature there. There's that virtual learning support page I had mentioned. I think it's the next slide on there. And you can see that there are multiple, the next one, and there are multiple areas, there you go, for the family, students and teachers to get supportive of any kind of issues they may be having. As I mentioned before, we've increased the number of personnel manning the Help Desk and virtual support area. And we're going to be, again, utilizing network engineers and ITRTs for that added number of Zoom phone calls. And again, there are three ways to get ahold of tech support, the phone, the email and Sabrina ticket. And those are all listed on those pages as you kind of dive in a little deeper. And then on the next slide, here's our page that shows student support documents. So you can see the arrow there showing student support. And then what we see here is we see videos that the ITRTs created. Of course, you can scroll all the way down that page. You'll see additional documents for students, adding your name to a Zoom, student directions for Zoom in general, and directions for Canvas. And again, there's some additional documents on there. The next slide is our page for our parent support documents and videos. And then here we see that there are similar documents in there. Again, as we hear and get more information from our parents, we add and change some of the support on there. There'll be some additional changes too in the next couple of days. Just had a meeting with the ITRTs today about some additional documents we want to get on there. And here is, the next page is our teacher support documents page. And you'll see the red arrow there that clicks directly to where we currently, we, when I took this screenshot here, we had seven videos by the ITRTs and 10 one-page documents on PowerPoints, on covering Zoom, on Canvas, on cross-stitching, cross-listing, and multiple areas of being able to work with Zoom and Canvas. Any training that we do, training level one and two in Zoom and Canvas, and all that training, we also put in there too. So they're able to see those slides. And the next slide discusses and talks about our device distribution process. And the process first starts off with principals determining the families' needs. So principals have reached out to their families. They've asked for how many devices, what devices do they need? Generally, what has been done in the past is that they have these device requests. They reach out to families. They give them a day to come in and pick up the devices on the on the distribution day. And then as that family comes in, they get checked off and they get given a device. It's about a 10-minute process. They just kind of kind of come right through. That's how the process is going to go through. So what we had done is we had actually distributed this this number of devices. You can see over 15,000 Chromebooks, over 10,000 MiFi hotspots. And remember again that they can connect up to 14 different devices. So there really should not be a need for anyone having more than one. And it's always unlimited data and it's never never throttled back to 3G. And then for iPads, we've had over 2,700 iPads at this time that have been distributed to our families. Now, the instructional technology device distribution, you know, kind of working through this process, you know, it's been a week and a day that we've been, you know, had school start last Tuesday and kind of going through it. We did have some supply issues. And I say, I put that in quotations because it was really more of a communication issue. When we had the devices, the Chromebooks and MiFi's on hand, we had those devices. But they were not always ready for distribution since the original numbers changed on the day of distribution. So principals reached out to their families. They found, you know, there was maybe 150 families were going to be coming in on this specific day. In some cases, on the day of distribution, there were over 300 families that showed up. And so they were not listed on any of the numbers of needing devices. And actually, some of them had previously indicated they did not need a device. So we want to make sure that everyone in need does get a device. So what we had to do, once those numbers and this teacher or the the parents came to the school sites, some of them did wait because it takes a little bit of time to take a device that we have that's currently in in supply and to prepare it for family and make sure everything logs on properly. It's about a two-hour process. Some families said they could stay and wait. And other families came back the next day and picked up their devices. So parents and families that needed devices have them. But it has been a communication, I'd say, a difficulty in just trying to make sure that the families that needed devices have been reaching out to the principals that we've asked them to do. And they have gotten us the information. So again, these families going back into the inventory and preparing a device to pick up takes a little bit of time. And we were very appreciative that the families, again, were patient. And some said, you know, I don't have time today, but I'll come by tomorrow and pick them up. There were increased numbers of devices all last week. So when everything was said and done and everyone had their devices and first day of school started, first couple of days in schools, families said they had their devices. And then we kept on hearing additional and some families asking for needing some additional supports on that. So again, we were able to get those requested Chromebooks and MiFi's out to those families. You know, we've always said that any family in need will receive what they need to access the instruction, Canvas and Zoom. The definition of of a need in a family is a family that does not have a computer or they do not have a, do not have a computer for each school-age student in the household. So if they have four students and they have three computers, then they are definitely in need. We want every student in the house that is of school age, that is getting instruction, to have their own device. And it's also a family that does not have internet at home. So if they have internet at home, they do not qualify for having a MiFi. We're not currently a one-to-one division, but we have said that to anyone with a computer or internet need, we'll get that, we'll get that support. And then finally, just a little discussion about the Virtual Scholars Academy. After going through all of the raw data, removing numerous duplicates and partial applications, our total came out to a little over 6,000 students in our brand-new Virtual Scholars Academy. So we are very happy about that. We have about, as far as looking at grade-level distributions, the division average is about 500 students for grades one through eight. So those, there are about 500 different, about 500 students through there. Now, it actually is K through eight, sorry. And then we have ninth and 10th grade, the division average is about 400, 11th, 12th grade, the division average is about 300 per grade. So as you can see, the higher we go up in school, fewer students were opting for the Virtual Scholars Academy. We know schools probably, you know, a social place too for maybe some of our older students. And they may have decided not to go through the Virtual Scholars Academy for at least the first semester. Some large schools had over 350 Virtual Scholar Academy students. We also added approximately 200 students that were new to NPS through the Virtual Scholars Academy. So these were students that were not here in Norfolk last year. They lived in the area, but they were not a student of ours. And so assuming they came from either private schools or came from like a homebound, not a homebound, but a homeschool situation. That's my portion of the presentation. And then after discussion and questions, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Gibson.
Any questions?
Martin.
Okay, Mr. Clayton and then Ms. Basine.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Cataldo, I wanted to go back and I don't, Tanner, it's the slide just before this. And I know that we've had some discussion, but I want to go back because I made a note in, I guess, our August presentation. You stated that we had more than enough devices, more devices than we had students. So I'm trying to correlate that statement with your slide here that says, I know we don't have a policy to say that we're one-to-one. But can you give me a little bit more clarity around that and how do we derive to this? And if not, how we need to proceed with this?
Okay, well, we are currently not one-to-one, but we do have those computers in our schools. And so we're not giving out like desktop computers for students. So we're not giving out those devices. But if we're talking about mobile devices, that's where we're approaching that one-to-one. And actually, we will be at that level very soon because that has been a goal that we've discussed before is about moving to one-to-one and making sure that everyone has a device, whether, you know, they show a need or not. So that is definitely where we're moving toward. But right now, so when there were supply issues, really was more of a issue of we did not have those devices prepped because we didn't know we needed those devices at those times. Once we had that prep time, we were able to get devices out to all the families in need. And we do have, again, additional Chromebooks and MiFi's currently for any families that are currently in need.
So as a follow-up to that one in regards to devices, and and I can totally understand, you know, the, and I thank you for the outline as to what the school level administrators were doing to assess what they needed as far as devices. How, what do we look at right now as far as devices and students, making sure that they have what they need?
So what the, what's supposed to happen is if a parent needs a device, they contact the principals. The principals.
In that particular piece, I'm just saying, as far as what's still outstanding. I mean, have we gotten all the devices that need to be where they need to be in the second week of school?
Yes, we do. Yes. And that has been going on all, you know, as we hear more and families say, oh, I didn't know or I wasn't sure. We're getting them devices. And so we have everyone who needs a device has a device.
Great. And if they need to get a device, they just need to, again, contact.
Contact that principal and to have the principal contact me and Jesse Zamora, and we will get them a device, definitely.
And my final question, Dr. Martin, was about teacher training, and particularly with the Canvas portion here. I appreciate the slide and then looking at Canvas here. But, you know, as school board, we get things that bubble up that come in there and talking about training. In regards to Canvas, I mean, the rollout for that and I guess the amount of adequate time for teachers to be able to be able to have the training, to be able to make sure they have the adjustment. Because you can't be a great teacher if you can't use the technology for yourself to be able to instruct. So have we done everything that we needed to do? And if not, and we're still going, having flexibility, are there some things that are being put in place now to ensure that our teachers have the necessary professional development ongoing in their preparation and delivering their instruction?
Yes. And as as Dr. Paul had mentioned, some of our schools had a later start than others with Canvas and actually getting it fully integrated. But we have provided training on a daily basis from the ITRTs. We train the ITRTs. Then they go out and train their teachers. As we hear their additional needs, we provide additional training for them. We're doing trainings really every day. Now, a big part of the instructional piece too is we want, of course, Canvas is going to be holding on to the instructional material. But as far as teachers have their Zoom links working, Zoom really is the way that we're talking about the the synchronous instruction. So that regular day when a teacher works with their students, that's all through Zoom, not through Canvas. Canvas holds the material. They can access Canvas and get assignments or look at curriculum. But that can all be introduced directly on Zoom. It does not have to go through that Canvas piece. Now, Canvas is connected into Synergy and Canvas grades can be showed in Synergy. We want that connection. Canvas is a robust system that can hold many different documents and things on there. But really, the the regular day-to-day instruction is going through Zoom primarily. That's that's where they're really meeting with the students and talking with them and providing them instructions, sharing their screens and kind of going through that, very similar to what we're doing tonight.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cataldo. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Any other questions?
Dr. Burtsong has her hand up.
Her hand up first. So I'd like to go first.
Who's going next?
Ms. Basine.
Oh, okay. You cut out. Okay. All right. But Dr. Burtsong, I will defer to you if you're following up with Mr. Clanton.
Yeah, I just wanted to be real clear, back to Mr. Clanton's point, you know, for full transparency, to kind of give you more information about the communication piece. As we were having meetings and discussing, you know, what the technology needs were, we had on hand, according to the data that we had, that we were ready to go. I know there was a mention of one-to-one a couple of maybe board meetings ago. And we probably need to talk about that a little more as well. But at that time, we were very confident that we had what we needed based on the data that we had. And as you know, when some of the schools started advertising their, you know, distribution processes and having parents come out to pick up their devices, a lot, and it's not, nobody's fault, not pointing fingers. I'm just sharing information. Many showed up that did not communicate with the school. And I'm not saying that was the fault of the parent. I'm just telling you what transpired. And so what happened for some schools, for example, if they initially said we needed 50 MiFi devices and then the same day it would turn into, no, we needed 300. So as you can imagine, we were, you know, trying to scramble at the last minute based upon the data that we had received and ordered, you know, technology according to that data. And then later found out that we needed significantly more. So we had to make an adjustment. And we were very fortunate that we were able to get what we needed before schools started. So I just wanted to be very clear with that piece.
Okay. Well, so along those lines, so I had similar questions to what Mr. Clanton had raised. But I do think we need to spend some time here as a board to really talk about the device distribution and access for students because I do think, and I know, and I admit, I was one of those parents who who did not put in the survey that I needed one. And then thinking that every student would have access to a device, I then did request one because I felt, you know, and I feel that for all of our families, that if we're all working off of this. that if we're all working off of this same device, that it's easier to troubleshoot for the district. It's, you know, the teachers know how to help their students. There's a lot of benefits, including also, you know, you have all the safety software on there. There's so many benefits to everybody working off of the same device. And so that's something that I think we need to talk about right now. Because there has been so many conflicting, you know, conversations around it, including, you know, even, you know, about whether this is a need based distribution or that everybody gets one. And now at the last meeting, I had mentioned, you know, the possibility of having an opt out. You know, that everybody, you know, that we just plan on everybody getting a device. And then at this point, figuring out who does not have a device and reach out to that parent to see if we could get that device. We talked some last time about a policy. However, you know, I feel like this is not something that requires a policy, but it is more an initiative that really requires a programmatic evaluation. It requires, you know, a lot more, I guess, thought around how we would strategically make sure that every student gets a device. And I don't think a policy would enable us to do that or preclude us from doing that. So I think that's something that we need to agree on, you know, possibly today and possibly give some direction to Dr. Birdsong to move in that direction. Because, you know, I hear, you know, we have, you know, almost fifteen hundred, I don't remember the exact number, that have iPads. You know, I have questions around whether the iPads really, do they support the learning process the same way as Chromebooks? Are there differences? Does that hinder the teacher from helping the student troubleshoot? You know, there are just some questions that I have about that. And I'd like for us as a board, as this is a work session, to really kind of dive into that and make some decisions and provide direction for the superintendent. Sorry, I was trying to get that all out in one.
So I was having some technical difficulties. I don't know if anyone else was because my screen was going in and out. But can you?
Uh-oh, let me repeat that.
What is your, what is your question exactly?
Well, my question is for us today, today is to provide some very clear direction that we don't want the, we want to direct the superintendent to move to a one to one. What does that look like? Can we get there to facilitate, you know, this virtual learning process that we're in right now? And what will it take? What do you need from us? You know, is there other funding implications? Are there, you know, what other resources? What do we need to do to get to that point? And so that's, that's my question.
Okay, well, I have noted that and this is something that we've, we discussed a lot. It was brought up in our last meeting last month. And so I think this will tie more into our discussion when we start talking about our accountability plan and incorporate that into, into our accountability plan and possibly strategic planning. Once, you know, so I think that we should, we will discuss this. It's just not today. Today, we're really just getting an update on what has been done and not necessarily what, you know, something like this that needs more attention.
Okay, I don't disagree with that. I just, you know, we touched on it in the policy committee meeting. And so I want us to be very clear about what the direction was based on the last meeting's conversation, discussion, and where we are today. So that's the other reason for raising that question.
The consensus that I got from the last meeting was that we, we are willing to have that discussion. I think that most of us want to, I mean, correct me if you're, you know, I'm wrong, if anyone's going to shake their head no. But the discussions that I've had with each of, each of you, that we are in agreement that we want to move toward one to one. Of course, it's going to have some budgetary ties and it's a broader discussion that again, I don't think we need, we have the time to have that today. But I think, but I'm glad you raised it again and I just want you to know that we haven't forgotten about it. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I do feel like it needs to be addressed because, you know, how many students right now don't have a device that may benefit from it? You know, or that hasn't engaged, you know, are there, I just, I don't want to wait several weeks before we figure that out. And so I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out what the, what the gap is and how do we close it, if that makes sense. But I'll, we can move on.
Okay, because the administration has already said, Dr., or, yeah, Dr. Cataldo, he said, you know, if someone needs one, they can get one. And we're being very, you know, it's been said over and over again that we're being very, their administration's being very flexible and very accommodating. And so that, that's what we're doing, the best we can do now. But we do need to be more strategic in that and I agree. Just again, that will be tabled to another, another meeting respectfully. Mr. Jordan, I saw your hand, Dr. Gabriel, and then Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you, Dr. Martin. So I'm not, personally, I don't want to get caught up in, you know, the whole one to one and what that means and is it initiative or not. I think the, as a, as a board, we took action to start school all online in September. In order for students to participate in an all online learning process, every child has to be able to connect effectively and efficiently in order to participate. Today, the, I appreciate Mr. Clanton's questions that he raised because that was the first time I had heard anything about counting desktop computers towards, the number of devices available. I think where, I think where Ms. Bassin was going and if not, this is where I'm going. It's not an option for us to really debate, in my opinion, at this point in time. So based upon mobile devices that we have in our system that we can make available to any and every child that operates at an efficient level, has the specs that it needs in order to participate in the virtual learning programs that we are providing, every child in Norfolk Public Schools is in need of that. And so I'm very much concerned about the definition that, that we're hearing about what need is. You can't learn if you're not connected through a all online program once we say that we are going to an all online program. And so I think we do need some specific clarity around, you know, we talked before about CAREZAC money and so forth. What do we currently have? What do we currently need? And how do we fill the gap as soon as possible? Because if the child isn't connected, whether it's one of the one thousand or so students that we're trying to find or just because as a parent, if you ask me, do I have a computer? And I say, yes, that has no meaning whatsoever in terms of whether or not I have a computer that is sufficient to meet the needs of the academic and instructional program that we're offering. So I think we do need some specific, clear understanding whether or not Norfolk Public Schools currently in our inventory has mobile devices, a device that can be made available to every single child in Norfolk Public Schools in order to participate in the virtual learning programs that we have built. And to me, if it's, if it's a no, which I think I'm hearing now, then, okay, so people are shaking their heads saying it's not a no. So what is it then?
I'm going to let Dr. Cataldo address that again, but, but please let me be very clear. It is not my expectation that when a parent calls and says to a principal, I need a mobile device and a MiFi device for my child, that there's a list of questions that they ask the parent. Do you have a computer at home? Do you have Wi-Fi? We're not trying to interrogate our parents. Parents call and say that they have a need. I have two children in Norfolk Public Schools. I want both of them to have Chromebooks and I need a MiFi device. That's what we, that's what we are here to do, is to provide that for our families. Now, I've not heard not once that a family has been turned away as of today that are in need, who have communicated that to our school division, who have communicated to a building principal, I need a Chromebook or I need a MiFi device. I'm not aware of that. May, are there children perhaps that have not enrolled yet or are out there that the principals or maybe they're on a roll and we don't know? I can't, you know, Mr. Jordan, I wish I could tell you that right now. But what I can say to you is that when a parent calls and says that they have a need, they're not, maybe they don't have what they need. And I have not heard from anyone in my IT department that we're not able to fulfill those needs. But I need Dr. Cataldo to be very clear with you, with the board, so that everybody's on the same page about where we are now and what we would need to go to a, to be a one to one division. I know we would certainly need additional financial resources in order to do that. Am I certain that we have those resources at this time? No, because I would have to collaborate with Mr. Jenkins around that. So let me hush and let Dr. Cataldo answer the question. Dr. Cataldo, very specifically, right now, today, do we have what we need for our children as it relates to Chromebooks to be able to disseminate for additional families that come forward right now and have a need for that?
Yes, we do, definitely. We definitely do. We just need to know, a family needs to let the principal know and they need to let us know, we have devices.
So Dr. Cataldo, if we right now are saying that, for example, one thousand children are not enrolled in Norfolk Public Schools, didn't show up or counted as no-shows right now, if those children showed up tomorrow, do we have a thousand devices to give those children if they are in need of those devices? If their parent says, my child needs a device?
Yes, we do.
And just for clarity, I wasn't suggesting that we were turning anyone away. What I'm suggesting from a school board perspective and from a school system perspective and what my question really is, we said earlier that twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight students had logged on. I think we're projecting that our enrollment would be twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand. My question is, does Norfolk Public Schools have twenty-eight thousand mobile devices that we would be able to make available if twenty-eight thousand students needed them?
And I don't, I don't recall ever saying that we had enough mobile devices for every child.
Yeah.
Never said that Norfolk Public Schools was a one to one division. It was in, I recall Dr. Cataldo saying that that would be our goal moving forward. So no one can sit here on this call and say that I've ever said that, that we would be able to provide a mobile device for every single child at this point. Now, maybe we can, but I've never said that. So let's be very clear with that.
I'm trying to be clear on what, on what I'm trying to, to raise. When, when the conversation goes to a one to one, in my mind,
Yes.
I think that includes devices that the school system has in the building. Plus, a device for every child in the division. So that's why I keep trying to avoid the one to one discussion.
Okay.
From the time that we had to shut down, from the time that we've had a discussion over the summer, my question was, does Norfolk Public Schools have a device available for every child? Should every child need a device? And so whenever I've heard, yes, we have enough devices, I wasn't counting desktops or anything like that. All I'm trying to say right now is, I keep hearing this conversation around need and then we'd heard a moment ago around a definition around need. What I'm positing is every child in the virtual environment that we have needs a device. As Ms. Bassin said earlier, they may opt out for whatever reason. I'm trying to shift the responsibility on us as a system to provide what the child needs, not put the burden on the parent to determine what the, what the child needs. And so I'm trying to figure out from a systems perspective, from our perspective, are we in a position to provide that? And if we aren't, what is it that it takes in order for us to provide it?
And again, I would say we've never claimed to be a one to one. When we say one to one, that's what we mean. That's what, you know, the educators on this call. When we hear one to one, Mr. Jordan, that means a device for every single child. And we've never said, not ever, that there's a device available for every single child. We had said based upon the need, based upon the survey data, based upon principals reaching out to families who said that they had that need. Some, like you know, you know, like as you're aware, there are some families who have chosen not to get a device from the division. And that's, you know, that's their choice. So we, we've never had the conversation about, you know, can we have one for every child? And maybe we can. Dr. Cataldo, please be very clear, please, as far as you know, because I don't want to misinform anyone or make promises that we can't keep this time. If every single child in Norfolk Public Schools, do we have thirty mobile devices that we can send home?
Do we have the number of total students, mobile devices?
Yes, not necessarily in need, but if we wanted to become a one to one division, which I think that would be so wonderful if we were able to do that. Have the capacity today to be a one to one division.
We are very, very close. We are very close.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move on with the next question from Dr. Gabriel, please.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Martin. And I really respect the comments by my colleagues with regard to making sure that students have what they need. And that has been the consensus from the beginning of this presentation. Make sure that we're giving the students what they need. I agree that maybe understanding definitions, you know, what one person might think is one to one may be interpreted differently. But I can tell you that as a parent that received the survey and responded to the survey with adequate time, I never felt as if I was being asked to opt out, but I was being asked to very openly share, you know, what's your, what, what, what do you need? And let's make sure that we can get you what you need. And that is with MiFi and computer. And I have not heard of any child or parent that I have specifically directed to the principal, they have been able to get what they need, even if they received something that was, like, for example, I did have one parent that said, I got a laptop that didn't have a webcam. I directed them back to the principal. They were able to get one, exchange it out very quickly and they, they realized what the issue is. But we need to be very clear when we're communicating here collectively as a board to the community. And we need to be very clear when we communicate to the superintendent. We communicate through the language of policy. And that is why I made the recommendation last meeting that we adopt a policy. The policy is both geared at strategic and visionary planning to determine what it is that the division needs. We all agree that in order to have the structures in place, we need to have students that have the devices, the mobile devices in order to be, do their work virtually or in person when that day comes. And the policy is very important because it allows for budgetary planning. It allows us to have direct implementation through the superintendent and hold the superintendent accountable for the distribution, for the programming, for the teaching, for all of that. And so that is why I had made the recommendation. And I sincerely hope that in the policy committee, that that is still the direction that we are moving in. You know, as long as it does come back to the board and we can collectively discuss it. So again, I'm saying that I, I understand and I agree with all of the need from my colleagues about the mobile devices, making sure every child has what they need. But we do need to speak through the language of policy and that is why the policy was suggested. So that the division is, to Mr. Jordan's point, we are just providing what the kids need and we are taking that question out of the, out of their, you know, the hands of the parent. And we're just taking care of what it is that we need because we are trying to set forward the educational standards that we want to accomplish. Thank you so much, Dr. Martin.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. And Ms. Campson, do you still have a question?
Yes. Well, I was a little confused when this whole discussion started because I very clearly remember, uh, last month, uh, when we met, that, uh, Dr. Gabriel brought up the fact that, that Norfolk Public Schools should be able to provide a one-on-one distribution. And I think that's where the one-on-one started. And she, as she just said, asked for a policy on it, which is our level. We're supposed to be doing policies because it would be like a child gets their math book, their science book, their social studies book, their Chromebook. And that was her discussion. And my understanding, Dr. Gabriel, was that you have already sent that to the policy committee to start the work on making sure that we have a policy, unless I misunderstood. Is that correct that you did that? Did this, this, did this, did your sugge- your suggestion or the fact that I think you wanted to start a motion? You wanted to make a motion that we do this, get a policy so that we did start moving toward and get a one-to-one, um, Chromebooks or, or whatever devices are needed for children? Wasn't that what we ended up with last month? And did, or did our, did it go to the policy committee already?
Yeah. So, Ms. Campson, it, it has come up in the policy committee. Um, we've also addressed it with the administration, um, to put it into the work wheelhouse. Um, as we're gonna, we have several policies reviewing here, but it has been discussed. Um, and if I'm at Doc Poe, uh, and Doc Gibson, for us to begin to work on something and to bring something back to the board, because that was the general consensus to send it to policy committee and come back. But we haven't got into the, the details of it yet.
Right. But, and that would be when we would have the discussion about it. I thought that's how we left that meeting, so I'm not quite sure why we just used it for half an hour, having the discussion that we agreed we would have, once, once it went to policy. Is that, am I accurate in that? Because I think everyone on the board would like to have a one-to-one distribution, but we need to follow what we already put in place, I thought, instead of adding another item to the agenda.
Well, from what I, what I remember from the last meeting, um, it was talked about, it was proposed to make a policy. I think Mr. Clayton had put that forward. Um, and then, uh, later on in the meeting, Mr. Uh, Jordan spoke up to say that it should be a part of strategic planning. Um, but, um, that, that's, uh, uh, that's how I, I even went back and, and listened to the meeting. So...
All right. I'm not asking anything else. I just wanted to point that out because I know we're way behind schedule.
I would like to have more information from our administration on the, the costs associated with it. We will begin, um, working on our budget next month. So, I think that would be a more appropriate time to have, allow them the time to, um, do the work to prepare information for us so that we can, we know what the implications are to making that decision. And I'm not saying it's not a good one and we shouldn't, you know, move forward, but I would like to gather the, enough information before we formally vote on moving forward with the
Exactly. Thank you.
That's where, that's where I stand right now. Um, Ms. Smith and then Ms. Bassin, please.
Thank you. All this question, the, this discussion about personal devices versus school-issue devices makes me think about what Dr. Poe said earlier and the security measures that can be put in place uh, during lessons or assessments to ensure that students, um, don't go to alternate sites and things of that nature. When a student has their own personal device, can those measures still be put in place?
Dr. Cataldo, would you respond to that?
Yes. Um, yes, many times they can be put into place. Uh, it would really depend on the system and, uh, we would have to do some research on that. But yes, the, many of those systems can be put into place on a personal device. It just requires them to download a program onto their own device and that connects into our system. And then we can, uh, do that same level of, uh, blocking out other websites and, and things.
So, how do we ensure that that takes place? Because a family would have to agree to that, correct?
Yes, the family would download the, the software and that software would go on their computer.
But if they don't agree, and I think this goes back to what Mr. Jordan was saying earlier, and I think Ms. Campson said something about it, um, distributing a Chromebook to every student regardless, because if a, hmm, if a pers- if a parent doesn't agree to it, then we have no control over it, is, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay, um, yeah, sorry. All right. And so, Ms. Bassin, do you have a quick question?
Uh, I'll just, I, my, mine was more of a comment. We spent the last 30 minutes, uh, talking about this because it's an essential, uh, tool needed for our children to, to learn in this virtual space. So, waiting, the more time that we spend, uh, you know, uh, kicking around, whether we're gonna call it one-to-one or saying every child gets a device, I mean, same thing, um, but we need to make sure that every student has the device. And so, and we need to have known that yesterday. So, that's the importance of this conversation. So, I'm just gonna leave it there and we can move, uh, forward, uh, with that.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Bassin. Um, but I do want to reiterate, as Dr. Birdsong and, um, Dr. Cataldo each said multiple times, that right now we are doing, doing the best we can to address the need and then moving forward to a one-to-one. Once we have more information, we can, we can vote on that, uh, make a, make a solid decision on that direction. And, um, and going back to what Christina or Ms. Smith said, sorry, um, you know, it, there are families that just aren't gonna take the device and, and I just don't see how we can make them. Um, but, you know, that's, again, we're gonna table, we're gonna postpone this discussion until, um, the next, we, we talk more about our budgetary, uh, uh, priorities. Um, so, uh, Dr. Birdsong, can you please, uh, have the next speaker begin the presentation? Continue.
Yes, and, and not to beat a dead horse, please know that the administration would love for us to move forward and be a one-to-one division for the record. So, please know that that would be our goal, most definitely. So, the next speaker is, um, Dr. Gibson. And so, I think Dr. Gibson is ready to go.
Good evening, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong and Bur- and, and board members. Happy New Year and welcome to the 2020-2021 school year. Our principals and staff members have worked very hard and creatively to connect with families to be sure all students were ready to begin school on the first day. Principals hosted virtual events to welcome families, answer parents' questions, and to ensure students knew, knew how to log in. Schools also hosted school supply distribution times to be sure students had needed devices, texts, and materials. Overall, the opening of school went well and principals were in place the first day of school, all week and this week, for all who came to those campuses for assistance while the rest of the students worked at home online. This year, in order to, in order to support our students' social-emotional learning, we are implementing Virginia-tiered Systems of Support, Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. We're gonna continue with our after-school clubs and organizations and we have begun the return to athletics. Of course, we're going to also embed social-emotional learning into our academic programs. Next slide, please. We are happy to report childcare services are being provided throughout the city of Norfolk. Champions has a total of 96 slots spread out across four elementary schools for three-year-olds or four-year-olds through fifth grade. The YMCA has programs for pre-K through eighth grade at Granby, Ingleside, Larchmont, Laramore, Taylor, and Willard. The Boys and Girls Club of Southeast Virginia has 100 slots available at Roughness. Southside Boys and Girls Club has opened on the 14th of this, of this month with 50 seats at Southside STEM Academy and 45 seats at their site for the St. Helena students. Before school began, we made sure that all staff had completed trainings that were mandatory. Our leaders were offered training for COVID-19 health mitigation during our Summer Leadership Institute. Principals also received PowerPoint slides to share with staff and students during Pre-Service Week and Opening of School Week to ensure that students were trained and to ensure that teachers receive professional development on COVID-19, mandatory child abuse reporting, sexual harassment, due process, suicide fit, suicide prevention, and accessing students' records. As of September 4th, we had a total of 596 out-of-district requests. 479 of these requests were approved on the first round. 29 of them were appealed and then, uh, and then approved. And we have ongoing requests that will be processed as we proceed through the year. As you are aware, Child Nutrition Services has provided support to our families with feeding programs throughout the summer. These programs have continued and in order to support these sites, our school security officer schedules have been flexed so that at each site, we have a security officer and those sites have their officers working from 11:00 to 5:30 each day. As we plan to open the school year, some of our teachers requested to work from their school buildings. As of today, we have 167 teachers who are working from their classrooms. These teachers have committed to this option and they have signed an agreement that requires strict enforcement of physical distancing, healthy hygiene, mask-wearing, and self-pre-screenings prior to reporting to the building each day. On August 26th, we held our first Operations Day for Dean's Assistant Principals and Principals. This day provided these workers with trainings to inform them on special education, school law, engaging the news media, human resource policies, navigating the budget and finance, and maintaining their school facilities. As you look at this next slide, I need to let you know that our professional development calendar was changed late last week after we submitted our PowerPoint. And we have condensed the full-day professional development for instruction to one day each month. Yesterday, we had a very successful day of learning. We've also moved some of our operation days to newsletters in order to provide more time for the central office leaders to be in buildings and in Zoom classrooms and to provide more time for our administrators to be in their classrooms and in their buildings with their students. We are going to ensure that our assistant principal meetings continue. Our operations, um, needs are met through newsletters and meetings periodically. And every month, we are going to ensure that our leaders are receiving ongoing support as they build their capacity. We're going to provide professional development to ensure that our students are receiving the instruction they need and that we are focusing on curriculum pacing, delivery of new instruction, and ongoing assessments. During the third and fourth weeks of September, as you heard before, all students will be completing pre-assessments, which will provide data for teachers to begin gauging students' level of performance and to set goals for academic growth. Schools will develop their school improvement plans by evaluating their school goals from last year, setting new goals for this year, and working to regain the lost ground as we provide new curriculum in all subjects. Each full day of professional development will provide time for school teams to work with curriculum development coordinators and teacher specialists in the morning and to work in the afternoons with their teams on implementing and monitoring their school improvement plans. School improvement plans are framed around improving academic achievement to ensure full accreditation in 100% of our schools, attracting and sustaining highly effective teachers and staff, engaging the community and stakeholders, and addressing the social-emotional needs of our students and staff by creating, by creating a culture of caring. As we open the year, we have worked very hard to ensure that we enroll 100% of our students. In accordance with state reporting rules, students on the first day of school are either considered present if they are there or absent if they are not there. A form of practice in Norfolk Public Schools was to remove students from the roles if they did not show up on the first day of school. Because of the complexity of the pandemic, as well as the new in- intentional support for all students during this challenging time, we have suspended the practice of eliminating children from the roles if they don't show up on the first day. School staff have reached out to those students who did not report as of today and they are providing support to engage these students by looking for them in neighborhoods in various ways, using social media, phone calls, home visits, to find our students and to get them enrolled. Do you have any questions?
Any hands?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. Any hands? Okay. Great. Well, thank you all. That was a wonderful presentation. It definitely sparked some good discussion and some items for us to add to the agenda moving forward. Um, I, as a parent, I'm just so thrilled. Um, this has been a, you know, I mean, not to say I don't want to be, be in person, but I just want to say that, um, you know, it's been really, uh, it's been really cool, uh, just to see how this is all playing out and, um, and just how well, you know, there's some struggles first day getting the kids to, to, um, you know, come back from their breaks a little bit. But, um, but, you know, they quickly fell into the routine and we're really excited to see all of their teachers and their friends. And so, um, so thank you for updating us on all of this information. Really appreciate it. Dr. Birdsong, go ahead.
We still have one more area to cover and that's operations.
Sorry.
No worries. Doctor, Mr. Brady is anxious and ready to go.
Okay.
And, and before he goes
I'm sorry, I guess we have a question. Before we do that, um, Ms. Bassin, go ahead and ask your question.
So, um, Dr. Gibson, could you share about how many, how many teachers are, would you say, um, in, you know, using the schools as their, as their teaching site?
167, uh, teachers out of the, over 2,000 were, um, opted to use that. We floated that out in a manner where teachers would not feel pressured and only those teachers who really wanted to do it had to appeal to their principal. And once they sent their request, they completed a form where they agreed to the physical distancing, the mask-wearing, and the other guidelines.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And moving forward, we have, who's next?
Mr. Billups.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Billups, go ahead.
Okay. Um, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Mr. Jordan, School Board Members, good evening. Tonight, I have the opportunity to share with you some human resources highlights to include teacher retention data, virtual recruitment information, and a staffing update overview. At the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year, Norfolk Public Schools saw a notable increase in our teacher retention as more educators chose to remain with Norfolk Public Schools for the 2020-2021 school year. Retaining an additional 2% of our teacher workforce resulted in having to fill approximately 50 fewer vacancies. Norfolk Public Schools continues on the path to increase teacher retention and this year's figure is the highest teacher retention rate we have reported since we began formally tracking this data in school year 2012-2013. Since the 2017-2018 school year, Norfolk Public Schools has retained teachers at a rate higher than the national average represented in the 2019 Economic Policy Institute report. A 2019 report published by the Economic Policy Institute examined the staffing challenges school divisions face as a result of turnover, attrition, and other factors. The report found that 13.8% of teachers either leave their current school assignment or leave teaching completely. Over a five-year period, school divisions included in the study reported a tripling of unfilled vacancies from 3.1% unfilled to 9.4% unfilled. In the same time period, the percent of positions these school divisions considered very difficult to fill doubled from 19.7% to 36.2%. In addition to turnover and attrition, vacancy fill rates are impacted by the reduced number of qualified applicants available to fill positions. Between school year 2008-2009 and school year 2015-2016, 15.4% fewer individuals earned education degrees and 27.4% And twenty-seven point four percent fewer completed a teacher preparation program. Approximately four point seven percent of all teachers are in their in first year of teaching. The report called the challenges in high poverty in urban schools more acute. In addition to these challenges, many positions that are not traditionally considered hard to fill. Have appeared on the Virginia Department of Education Critical Shortage Teaching Areas List for the past few years. These areas include elementary education, pre-K through six. English, special education, mathematics, science, career and technical education and all foreign languages. Generally speaking, during the course of a normal school year, the Department of Human Resources. Host or participates in approximately forty recruitment events annually. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and related travel restrictions and closures. All March twenty twenty or later scheduled spring recruitment events were canceled by hosting colleges. Universities or businesses. These events account for over half of our usual recruitment model. Our team understood that unprecedented times call for unprecedented action. And we swiftly charted a new course and began planning to host our own virtual recruitment events. While we know interested applicants do not necessarily equate to qualified applicants. We received four hundred and seventy-two application requests for an interview during one of our fairs. Since April twenty twenty and with the assistance of our building administrators, we hosted five virtual job fairs. Thanks to our team's ability to invent and adapt, we have filled approximately two hundred and twelve. Of our teacher vacancies and new positions, all while operating and maneuvering in an ever-changing virtual environment. The Department of Human Resources has filled approximately two hundred and thirty-six vacancies since July one, twenty twenty. These consisted of administrator contracts, eight positions filled, classified contracts, sixteen positions filled. Teacher contracts, two hundred and twelve positions filled. These figures do not include job offers that are currently in progress. Meaning we are only reporting those individuals who have successfully and fully completed the new hire process. And are active in our HR payroll management system. As classroom teacher positions constitute the majority of our staffing. We are pleased to share that on the average, over ninety-six percent of those positions. At all levels are filled as of September one, twenty twenty. Each staffing area is approximately within two to four percentage points of one another. With elementary staff at ninety-five point one percent, secondary staff at ninety-seven percent. And our special education, gifted education and ESL positions staff at ninety-eight point eight percent. At this time, I'll entertain any questions that anyone might have.
Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Um, so in regards to uh the staffing, um, you know, you mentioned some of the. The uh, the subject areas where there are greater shortages than others. It'd be really nice to see that breakdown um for our school division as well. Um, especially, you know, we know special education is an area. Um, but I think, you know, math, science, you know, it'd be good to see um in those content areas. How we're doing in terms of retaining and uh filling the positions in those in those core areas.
Certainly.
Yeah, and I think you've you've provided that to us in the past and we just think that that should be. Um, I'd like to see that be a regular part of, you know, the end of year reporting. Um, which I believe we've even included, you know, in our accountability plan. So I think that would be. Um, something that's helpful as well as looking at it by uh the number of years uh that our our teachers have been. Um, you know, teaching. So you've provided that to us as well in in the past. So I think that report would be helpful.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, so how many teacher billits uh full-time equivalents are there in total?
Um, it's approximately, full-time equivalents approximately twenty-three hundred.
Okay, and along with what Ms. Bassin was saying. At some point, it will be good to see where the vacancies are. Because uh one percent or ten percent, whatever the number may be, to one school. Doesn't equate to the same impact as it will to another school.
Ms. Smith, um, just so I'm clear, are you requesting the report that Mr. Billups had put together before? That shows by school the amount of vacancies, full-time and sub-teachers?
Yeah, not on a regular basis, but like mid-year or quarterly or something like that.
Okay. Ms. Bassin?
Um, yeah, earlier, you know, we touched on it in um uh in closed session and said that we would discuss it in open session. Uh, but just a quick uh overview of how we are using our substitute teachers um was one area. Then I know we were gonna, we said we were gonna talk more about, so um. Um, you know, how are we using them? Um, is one question. Are are we, do we have a pool of subs that we're using? Are we using them for breakouts? You know, how? How are we using our substitute teachers right now?
Well, for all positions that we were unable to fill prior to the start of school. We have long-term substitutes in each position. So no vacant position had is has gone unfilled without a long-term substitute. So that long-term substitute is someone who was selected by the principal, who they wanted to have. Who perhaps they've used them in the past, who's familiar with the school, familiar with our students. And is the depth at being able to um handle the the curriculum or else the 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 principal would not have selected them. And then they are able to receive the additional training um that was also being provided to. Our regular contracted teachers. So all of our classrooms do have long-term subs in them.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Uh, Mr. Billups or maybe Mr. Billups and the team. Uh, can you all refresh us on um what the teacher assignment is? I know I had a couple of parents contact me uh because they. They were told that the teacher that was working with them, I guess in the virtual environment, I don't know if that's VSA or not. May not be their teacher uh. Should we transition back to some in-person learning? Can you just remind us? How the teacher assignments work in terms of um students that they're working with now? And students that they may or may not be working with uh moving forward depending upon. Whether we stay a hundred percent virtual for the year or whether we end up doing some some transitioning uh moving forward.
Well, not not being a quite certain of exactly what you're referencing, what what they what the parents may be referencing though is. We have what's called a teacher of record. That's the person who is the 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 teacher of record for that particular classroom. However, because we have a number of resource teachers as well, such as Title One teachers, special education collaborative teachers. It may be a situation in which these individuals are working with students and in classrooms as well. To maximize the benefit of being able to utilize them. Because if they're not the teacher of record, they would be in situations in which they may not necessarily have a this. A classroom of children, you know, every day. So now they can work alongside other teachers, providing assistance to them. That without knowing more, I would say that may be what some of the parents are are speaking of. That they're seeing different teachers who are providing assistance. Somebody else on the team may be able to add further insight into that.
Dr. Cattado should be able to address um that question specifically because he was heavily involved with the scheduling. And perhaps Dr. Gibson as well. Dr. Cattado, you want to start?
Yes, definitely. So a a student that is currently in Virtual Scholars Academy will be in there until. Uh, the end, at least until the first semester. Uh, and so they should not have their their teacher change for them. We we have also worked on having. The virtual scholar teachers uh that are teaching online. Uh, because we, of course, everyone's online now, but when we go back to face-to-face, they'll also be um having to teach their students online as well. Uh, so they'll should be the same teacher. There should not be. And I did receive a lot of questions from that from parents, but. I'm assured that if they stay in the program, uh they should not have a different teacher that starts with them mid mid-year.
Then non-VSA, then I I guess ou- outside of what we know may traditionally happen. Teachers go on leave, teachers move, you know, those types of things. But is there, is there any? Known systematic process that's in place that we have um. Teachers providing core instruction to groups of students, let's say for the first nine weeks. And then the second nine weeks, there would be uh a different core instructor that would pick up.
No, no, not at all. No, we we ensure that and want to make sure that teachers. Um, you know, stay, they get to know their students. And so it's really would be detrimental if we were to just switch. Uh, along the way, unless of course extenuating circumstances occur.
Thank you. And then uh my second question is, uh, Mr. Billups, when we are. Uh, assigning long-term subs um in buildings, um. I will say in in particular to some of our buildings that may be hard to staff or have um. Uh, disproportionate share of equity and opportunity students. What what type of process are we using in terms of uh substitute teacher placement? That um that the substitute teacher has a comfort level with delivering uh online virtual instruction?
Okay, with again, as far as long-term substitutes go. Um, we work very closely with principals in most cases to assign a long-term sub. We typically don't just place someone there. Oftentimes. Principals will already know individuals who've worked with their schools before, who worked with their students before. Who are comfortable with that environment, who principals who have observed are good with the instruction, good with the students, good with classroom management. And then they will accept um that person. Sometimes principals will, even if we recommend it, a certain person as a long-term substitute. Sometimes principal will say, no, no, I don't want that person. They've been here before. I don't think they'll work out well here. So it's a collaborative process of um selecting a substitute between HR and the um the administration of a school. To ensure that it's someone that they feel can best carry that class until a permanent teacher is located.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, can we move on to operations then?
Uh, good evening, uh Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan and members of the board. I get to talk about the fun stuff. So on August twenty-fourth, we had all hands on deck day. Where everyone from Facilities Management delivered the stored PPE supplies from the warehouse. Um, it was an amazing day. I actually got to participate. I was there when they mustered and created the plan. And then when they started loading up all the materials in the trucks. If you'll uh switch to the next slide, please. You'll see uh, you'll see how how many staff members were involved. We we did big loads, we did small loads. Whatever it took to deliver all the du- all the PPE devices to the fifty-one locations. It was a great day. Next slide, please. All right, Community Eligibility Provision. Norfolk Public Schools is serving breakfast and lunch at no charge to children eighteen and under. Utilizing the Summer Food Service Program, which is was extended through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Snack and supper are also offered free of charge through the Child and Adult Care Food Program. But effective January first, twenty twenty-one, breakfast and lunch will be available free of charge to all Norfolk Public School students. Through the Community Eligibility Provision of the National School Lunch Program. Uh, so from now on, no no meal program applications will be needed. And all students will eat every meal for free at all Norfolk Public Schools. So no more stigma, no more long lines. We'll be able to move the kids through the uh cafeterias quicker. And uh, we're all excited about this. I know Dr. Birdsong is. We've had many conversations about it. Um, we are serving at twenty-seven elementary schools, four middle schools. And three high schools. The serving has been brisk. I'll share some numbers with you. In the first four days of the serving, we have served thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four meals. To our needy families, all our families. And another amazing uh data point, from March sixteenth through September the fourth. We served seven hundred eighty-nine thousand meals to our our Norfolk residents. Uh, something we all are very proud of. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right, so we decided we wanted to utilize our buses to deliver uh technology. To our parents and students and uh we also wanted to deliver them to check on engagement. Um, you know, help people with signing into our applications. So we presented uh, you know, this opportunity to one of our middle schools. And they were more than happy to uh go out and demonstrate uh what we had hoped for and we'd like to show you that clip.
Having a bus is a big deal. Uh, you know, I really appreciate the fact that the district had the vision. To make sure that we had everything that we needed and we had all the materials, we had the people, we had the resources in place. That allowed us to come out and help to serve this community.
Today, we are out in our Mariners Watch community. We are passing out Chromebooks as well as MiFi's. We're providing technical assistance utilizing our MiFi's as well as. One of our community members, partners, has allowed us to use the community community center. In order to host parents within this neighborhood.
These teachers, principals, uh superintendents, the school bus, everyone has stepped up for this and you guys, you know. Just let them know how much you appreciate it because this is a blessing for our children. This is our new lifestyle for right now. And guess what? It is a blessing. The children are happy and I am tremendously happy.
Norfolk Public Schools is here for our community. It is our role to serve. We are driving for five. We are supporting our students being academically strong by ensuring they have the necessary resources. To operate in a virtual learning environment. It is our goal to continue forward with what Norfolk Public Schools has outlined. And demanded of all of its team members.
And that concludes our our presentation. Uh, we're certainly open for questions if anybody has one.
Um, Ms. Bassin, go ahead and then I have a comment.
Mr. Fraley, thank you for that presentation. I I am very excited that uh we were able to. Uh, provide meals for all of our students. I think that is um is so great. Um, I do have a couple of questions around engagement and I know, I think it came up earlier and then said that you uh would go over this. Um, so I I just want clarification. So every. Um, there was a school bus that went to every school to um provide devices. And also um, you know, walk through um how to log in and all of that with their students that needed it. Is that correct?
We did is we provided one bus at all fifty-one locations and we planted the seed in our administrative teams. That uh that bus was for the following purposes. And 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 that was pursued by each individual administrative team um in the manner that worked best for them. And and you know, the video we showed you was one of the ways the team decided to engage the buses. And and our purpose was to, you know, go out and see who had questions about logging in and. How to use the web-based programs and and and, you know, also just get out there and rub shoulders and see what people needed.
Right, okay. And so how how were we also using our family engagement specialists? Um, as part of this or how are we using um those individuals?
Well, in our schoolhouses right now, we have deans, we have counselors, we have administrators as, you know, was viewed in the video. And so, you know, with the buildings uh being uh, you know, empty as far as student attendance is concerned. Those people are available to go out and serve these purposes. And so that was our idea to get them out there and. Get them moving in the community to see what we needed.
Okay, um, and last in my question, um, so uh is about PPE. So we have PPE in all of. So we have PPE in all of our school buildings now. Is that correct?
Well, there was over a million dollars in purchases of PPE, and it's been arriving at our big warehouse, our Belmore complex, over the last couple of weeks. As it arrives, they unload it and organize it. Dr. Moore goes over and works with Danny Johnson, and then they create a delivery model. Currently, we've had sanitizer delivered, masks delivered, gown, like paper gowns delivered. There are more things being delivered as we speak, because Dr. Moore has things kind of coming in. I know there's tapes and markers and a few other things, so we can mark spots on the floor for proper social distancing. So there's things arriving, and we are getting ready to organize another big delivery date. Dr. Moore, Danny Johnson, and myself.
Okay. About what percentage of stuff would you say is, is in at this moment in time?
I, I can tell you, we've, I can tell you, we've delivered more than 30 pallets of stuff stacked on a four-by-four pallet, six foot tall. You know, it, it, you know, as far as volume, it's a lot. As far as dollar value, I couldn't respond to that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, yeah, all right. I was just curious if we thought, you thought we were like halfway there, you know, you know, something like that, but.
I can tell you, all 51 locations have a significant amount of product on hand. You know, they don't have everything, but they, we're off to a good start. I, I believe is a fair way to state it.
Okay, great. And the last, so hop up to that is, you know, what role, I mean, so where are, are we in terms of our facilities being, you know, assessed for their health? You know, our ventilation systems, all of those things. Are we, have those, have they been examined for that? Because we know that that plays a significant role in transmission as well. Where are we with, with that?
Well, I can tell you that, I, I don't know if I can technically respond to that, but I can tell you about our common practices over the summer. All of our HVAC systems are, are reviewed. The filters are changed out on a very regular basis, and that occurred over this summer. So I would say that our filters are fresh. You know, our systems are working. As far as a comprehensive review of air quality, I, I, I don't believe we're there, but we've certainly done everything we can do to make sure the filters are changed. Our buildings are clean. They are ready to receive students. They are sanitized.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Fraley, I really love those numbers, the information that you shared about our nutrition program that I've been hearing, and maybe Dr. Gabriel can speak to this too, with it in our hospital, Children's Hospital, we've been seeing a lot of cases of food insecurities. And I think that this, any, any of the barriers that, you know, I know this is, this is, but to everyone involved, any of the barriers that we can break down in order to. Demonstrated that you, that the administration is. Happen, so thank you.
I'm sorry, Dr. Martin, some of your audio went out. I, I didn't hear all of it.
I just, I just wanted to thank you and the administration for removing barriers to nutrition access. My friends that, my, I know and that work. And you're seeing a lot of food insecurities, an increase in food insecurities in their cases. And I'm saying thank you very much, because anytime we can improve access to nutrition, you know, it's a win, and it's, it's a good thing, so.
Yeah, our Senior Director of Nutrition is, she would feed the world if, if she could. And I mean that literally. We have, we're working with, we're feeding at all the 11 childcare sites that Dr. Gibson referred to. We've been approached by other childcare sites in the city that are not housed in our facilities, but they've asked us if we could provide nutrition. And we're looking into that to see if we can expand, because we really don't want to tell anybody no. And again, like I said, she wants to feed everybody. So they're doing some amazing things. And, and we are serving a whole lot of folks on a daily basis. We're even looking at re, restarting the weekend food program to where we can have people come on Fridays and pick up grab meals, you know, make and take meals that'll last them through the Monday timeframe. Because, you know, we're worried about nutrition on the weekends as well.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
And then Ms. Basine.
Yeah, Mr. Fraley, as we may one day be returning for some of our students back in person, how, how are things going with ventilation and other preparations so that we can have all, or hopefully all of our schools ready to have the necessary airflow or whatever else is required in order to have safe learning environments in person? Or for that matter, we have, I guess, some of our principals and staff and others are in the schools now, so.
Yes, sir.
For tomorrow, but also for today.
Well, those that are allowed to access the building to teach from the building are under strict guidelines. There's not, you know, free travel through the building. They have to maintain social distancing. They are expected to use certain facilities. They cannot leave the building to go get lunch and come back. They stay for the duration of their teaching cycles. So there's been some very serious, you know, rules put into place so that we're protecting them. As far as the building cleanliness, as I alluded to earlier, our buildings are clean. They are sanitized at the ends of the day with our foggers. They're ready. You know, as far as ventilation, again, we've changed out the filters and the HVAC systems. You know, where we have an issue, we get in there and we get it fixed as quickly as we can. We think we're sitting in a, a good place. We're system-ready, and we've started talking about receiving kids.
Is there some standard or checklist or something that, like you get some type of approval certification? It shows that our air ventilation systems meet the, whatever the health standards are, or whatever the appropriate standards are?
Well, as you know, there are returns and supplies in HVAC system, so it's a constant circulation. And again, ours are, are working. And, and again, if they aren't, we, we certainly do everything we can to get them corrected. But as far as air quality checks, that is something that we would have to pay an outside contractor to do, and it's very costly. And so that has not been ordered, nor do we feel like it's necessary.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Dr. Basine.
Ms. Basine.
Um, so to follow up to the, the ventilation question I had asked earlier as well. So there, there are certain standards, as you probably know, you know, like a certain type of filter that is being recommended specifically for, for COVID. And, and the way the air returns, there, there are specifications around that. So if, you don't have to answer that today, but if it's, you know, as we get closer to this, this, you know, bringing students back, when we have a more holistic conversation around this, you know, I, I think some verification that we have made those adjustments is necessary specific to this moment, you know, is specific to this virus, I think is important.
I, I will certainly speak to Danny Johnson and get his feedback on it. And, and I'll give you all whatever I, I, I can glean from that conversation.
Okay. And Dr. Martin, oh, go ahead. I'll defer to Ms. Campson, if you can come back to me later.
Okay, Ms. Campson.
Thank you. I just had a real quick question for Mr. Fraley, and not a question, but a, a request. Lake Taylor combined, that we are supposed to be moving toward the K-8 model there with our K-2 kids being moved of this coming next September, so that the school's ready. Could we get an update on where we are with that? I know there was construction that, that, that was taken care of summer before. I'm not sure if you were able to do anything this past summer. I know that bathrooms had to go in, those types of things, to get it ready. And so I, I'm just requesting, and also to Ms. Martin, who I've already let know, that I'd like to have an update on that. I don't, not ask any questions about it now, because it'd be off-topic. And, and to Dr. Birdsong on the same topic, just requesting, not for tonight, just that, that we get an update on where we are in determining the focus of the school. What will that be? So that when we open that as a total K-8 school, September 21, they'll be ready to go. And that, that was all for that part. Thank you.
I, I will have a physical update the next time we get together.
Yay, thank you. That's really good work, Mr. Fraley.
Well, I mean, I've reviewed the most recent CIIP work, and that is, that is, there is nothing that lists, there is anything still going on there. So I believe that it's, it is complete.
So they, they put in the little kids' restrooms?
I, I, I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Oh, well, see, that's great. That's great, that would be great.
All the work that was scheduled for the summer has taken place and more.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, I, Ms. Basine, go ahead, and then I'd like to move on. We are, we are very behind on schedule, but I, you know, of course, I always want to make sure that you're, you're getting, you know, your questions answered. So please go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Um, I appreciate that, Dr. Martin. I think this is a, an, a critical question that is now next steps. So where do we, where do we go from here? One thing, you know, I have, you know, requested in the past via emails and is, is having the board, you know, direct, the administration are working collaboratively on developing a decision-making matrix that would include health metrics that would guide our decision-making process to moving from virtual to in-person learning. And there are some clear, clearer metrics out now that can help guide us in that process. So for one, you know, so what is our, what does our timeline look like? Do we have a matrix already that, that the administration has developed in collaboration with our health officials? And if not, is it possible to get that developed by our next work session? If that is, you know, I hope that is the direction that we're going in.
Yeah, these updates, we've asked some administration to, this will be, this is becoming a regular agenda item as we move forward and move in that direction. But I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Birdsong to answer the, any of the question, the question that she asked.
Which question?
I'm sorry.
Whi, which question? I'm sorry.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Well, can you sum it up? I, I know what I'm hearing, but go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm asking for the division to develop a matrix that would guide our decision-making process from moving from virtual to in-person, which would include the percent positivity, you know, number of new cases per 100,000. Do we have all of the mitigation strategies in place? So I think it'd be public and transparent for our, our families, our students, our stakeholders. You know, everybody's on the same page about how we move through these different phases. And if, God forbid, you know, we have to close again in the future, you know, everybody knows, okay, we're in the red. This is what needs to happen. And so, so that's my question. What are our next steps for, for getting that in place?
And, and, and we would really like, before we move on, you know, I know there've been several individual requests from board members, so it would be great to get some direction from the board regarding what it is specifically, like, that you would like us to move forward with. So it's very clear, clearly communicated. But we have worked very, very closely with Dr. Lindsay and her staff. And as recent as this past Tuesday, we continue to talk about and discuss our, the various metrics to include case incident rate, outbreaks, ED visits, confirmed ICU hospitalizations, percent positivity, cases amongst healthcare workers, hospital beds occupied, issues with PPE, trends, burden, what does the community transmission look like? So yes, we, we have been discussing metrics. And so whatever the board would, you know, whatever direction the board would like us to move in, we're, we're happy to do that. But, you know, we're receiving lots of different requests from lots of different board members. So it would be great for the administration if the board can determine what, in fact, they would like us to be able to present out in October.
Okay. Well, I, I personally haven't seen, you know, the individual requests, so I can't speak to what those individual requests are.
They're all coming to me.
Okay, so, so, but this is something, and I can send it out. Again, I know, you know, Virginia Beach's plan includes a similar matrix with, you know, core indicators. The CDC has also provided a great table of indicators for school divisions to use. It's very clear, you know, a lot of, and it explains, you know, what the indicators are. And then I think for us to agree upon those indicators and, you know, so that it is transparent, you know. And I hope that the board is in agreement on that. And that's, that I think is really important. We have two board meetings before that November 4th. You know, those nine weeks are up. We're, we'll be at seven weeks after this week. And I think that we have to be talking about what we're doing next as soon as possible for our families to, to be able to appropriately plan.
And I, I would like, if, if possible during one of those meetings, if we could invite Dr. Lindsay to speak to the board so that she can speak directly to the various metrics. She can also provide some information about our local metrics, regional metrics, statewide metrics, just to give you guys some context. But what, and I don't mean to speak for Dr. Lindsay, but one thing she will say to you is that she will not be providing you, yes, you should move in a direction of opening schools, or no. Her, her, when she meets with our team and when we have conversations with her staff members, it's all about providing the information so that the board and the administration can make an informed decision.
I, I completely understand that. But there, there are clear metrics out there now to guide the decision-making process. So that, that is up to us, as you said, not for Dr. Lindsay to determine. She can certainly explain what they all mean for those that don't know what they mean. But I think there are clear indicators out there now, so.
Thank you, Ms. Basine. I appreciate that, and we'll, we'll look at getting Ms. Lindsay.
And that, I'm, but I'm not sure that we, we got resolution to that question, so.
The matrix?
Yeah, can we expect to have that? Or are we gonna have our next meeting try to invite Dr. Lindsay?
Well, what I'm saying is, I, I, what I think we should do is that we should, should be informed as a group and look at the exact metrics that she's recommending so that we can all be on the same page, ask questions, weigh what the different metrics mean before we can collectively make a decision on, on moving forward. Ms. Smith?
So, Dr. Martin, can you put that as a part of agenda planning and set a date and time that you can present at one of our meetings? Dr. Lindsay?
Yeah. Let me ask you this. Would you be willing to have a special meeting just to talk about this discussion?
Yes. Having this discussion during the October work session would be perfect. I don't know that.
That would be great, too. I was just, just in case she can't make it.
That, that's all I wanted to hear, all right.
And I know, Dr. Gabriel, you had your hand up.
I don't have any further questions. I think that we're in, there's a former board member who used to say, we're driving the car and changing the tire at the same time. Data changes every day. And not only are we going to be dealing with COVID-19, but we're also going to be dealing with influenza and other viruses that are coming up. I know this because I'm seeing it and treating it. And I do agree with my colleagues, the health matrices are out there. Every division is unique in what they can do within their division and how they can serve their community. I think the most important thing that we can do as a board and as a division is clearly communicate where we are with our families. And we did that. We said we are online for the first nine. And what we need to do is work cooperatively and in trust with the administration in order to come together on what we agree on. in order to come together on what we agree on. And I, I hear what Ms. Basine is saying about the health matrices, but it's also teachers, it's also operational, it is everything else that goes into that. What can we as a division do in order to deliver superb and excellent education to our students in a safe environment? If we shoot for a 10 percentile, you know, community positivity rate and we open schools, we are going to hit that number so fast as soon as we open schools, it's going to be unbelievable. However, if we do take the suggestion of Dr. Birdsong and bring in Dr. Lindsay, however she feels she need, she can add to the data that we are reviewing, I think that will help us collectively as a board balance that information with the operational and administrative needs of the division. I'm very happy to have that conversation. I think it's necessary. But we were very clear with the community, the first nine were online. And I will also say to the other community members, every board member here is fully committed to making sure that our early learners, our ELL students and our special ed students are prioritized as far as what that reentry will look like. And so that's, that's my perspective. Very happy to have the conversation. We need to have all the data before us, but we have been very clear to the community where this board stands as far as virtual learning.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what I was saying is that, but I don't want to wait until November to start exploring what those metrics are. I think that that's worth having if she's willing, if Dr. Lindsay's willing to come in and able to in October.
And that anticipated this conversation, so I've already put a request out, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
She's not available. She'll make someone on her staff available.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Just real quick, just process-wise, in, in response to Dr. Birdsong saying that she's receiving things from all of us individually. I think process-wise, if we would either send to Dr. Martin and, and she can help put something together, or if we're sending to Dr. Birdsong, you know, at least copy Dr. Martin, copy the board so that we know, so that Dr. Birdsong doesn't feel like she's being pulled in seven different directions.
I'd appreciate that too. I, I've been copied on some, but I don't know what I'm missing. So, um, so I, I appreciate that. Okay, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I've been also having technical difficulties and difficulty seeing my screen and some sound at certain points. So I'd like to move forward, get back to the agenda with our policy discussion. Okay, I see it's up here. Okay, who will be presenting on policy?
So thank you very much. We are certainly prepared to have our policy discussion. Dr. Poehl is serving as the administration's liaison to the School Board Policy Review Committee. And his work, our work is also being supported by Dr. Gibson, who attends the meeting, the meetings as well. So Dr. Poehl is prepared to lead that discussion, certainly in collaboration with Mrs. Basine and Mr. Clanton.
All right, thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening again, everybody. We have several policies to go through and I want to thank Ms. Basine, Mr. Clanton, and Mr. Cloud and Dr. Gibson. We had a couple productive meetings a couple weeks in a row to start getting through these. And you saw the long list today. And we've tried to organize them in a way of the ones that have pretty basic changes down to the ones that we'd like to have second readings on, so we can go through them. I know I was texting with Ms. Tanner and she's having, there's a couple technical difficulties on her end, so it might take a second to pull each one up, but we're going to do our best. And this first one you have before you, and you can also see we've added a cover page to each policy to give you kind of the dates and the timelines that we have, as well as overview of what the updates were recommended by the VSB. As you also are aware, we do try to stick the VSB updates as much as possible. Our, the first one was a Z policy that we have on file. So as Karen scrolls down to the red line, you'll see that it, the, the only change here is adding to the protected classes for non-discrimination as, as, as the code changes to keep up with the code. Any questions or comments on this one?
I'd like to comment, Dr. Poehl, you know, for the next several, or at least for the next couple of months, we're going, we will have a variety of policies to, to, to move forward and for the, for the board members to review for the sake of time. If, if you guys are in agreement, Dr. Poehl won't necessarily have to go through every single policy, but if there are questions that you have related, related to these policies, we are happy, more than happy to address them. If that's okay with the, the, with the board members and the school board members who are on the policy review team. Mr. Clanton, Mrs. Basine, would that work for you?
Yeah, that works for me. Just, you know, as we talked about in our committee meetings, you know, I would maybe highlight the policies where there's, you know, more substantial changes in the content and in the policy itself. Or if it's a new policy, Dr. Poehl, we do have some of those. So if you wanted to maybe highlight those policies, I would recommend doing that versus then the minor, you know, the minor changes.
That's just music to my ears from both of y'all and I appreciate that a whole bunch. So with that being the case, I think if we slide down to the ones that have the major changes, the first one would be GB. If you could pull that one up, Ms. Tanner. So GB is an interesting predicament where we have a GBF, which is a form, and we have documentation that the board has discussed GB in the past, but we don't have a GB policy anywhere. So GB is, this is the, the recommended one from VSB. I put the red line on there so you can see what changes they made from their last one. So this would be the first one that might have any discussion. And I know I've, I've talked with Mr. Phillips about it as well. And he's 100% for, we, we probably had this at some point and I apologize for not being able to find it.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Smith?
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Smith trying to speak from you.
No, not that. From one, I'm sorry.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, next, please move forward with the presentation.
All right, the next one would be GCL, Ms. Tanner. This one, there are several improvements to the professional development policy and requirements. The VSB included a lot more specific language on, on offerings that were required to have with our leaders and our teachers and the like. So you'll see it changes the front of our language, but really rewrites the whole policy around what school boards need to make, need to ensure is taking place within the school divisions. Any questions on this?
Okay, go on to the next policy, please.
All right, next is JEG. And as Ms. Tanner pulls JEG up, this changes around the compulsory attendance laws. So these are just legal changes, but there are a good amount of changes in this policy.
So these are just legal reference changes or?
And there's a lot of language change to this policy as well because of the legal references.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Could you just, I'm hearing a lot of background noise and if everybody could just mute their?
I think it's me, because I have about 20 people in my house right now, so.
Oh, oh.
So everyone was given, has these policies. Let me, let me kind of take a different approach. Are there any policies that stand out that you may have a question about or a concern? Ms. Smith?
There were none at the community level, but there were, and we don't have to pull these up, but on the listing, I think how Ms. Tanner has it, we have one, two, three, four, five, six policies that we do. The committee wanted to have a first and a second reading to give the community time to have some input on them as well. And they're, the great majority of them are just, they're, they're changes because of code. But they are, some of them are sensitive policies. So we wanted to make sure that they were out and with enough time for the, our community to offer feedback.
Right.
I'd like to add to that one, just for, for our colleagues in the respect here, which are noticing there is a cover page now. And we talked about that two years ago at one of our board retreats. Not only just to add a greater level of transparency to us as board members, but also to the community as to what we're, what we're doing in the actual particular policy items. So what Dr. Poehl just mentioned, a first and second reading is something not new, but the community now will know what are just statutory things that have come from the General Assembly that we just need to present it to the board and we can take action on it in one meeting. And those which will, may have required public comment and they have a first and second reading. So that's what you're seeing there. And I think, and for Dr. Birdsong and her team, I personally thank you and the team coming together, really because we're going to get these things moving as you're seeing. It's a lot, but I appreciate the work that you all have put into it.
So I think Ms. Campson.
Long our talk.
Ms. Smith, once again, did you want to say something?
Thank you. Policy DB, in it, it states that the budget will be published in a newspaper 10 days. Not the budget, but, give me a second. Notification of the public hearing will be 10 days in advance. So people aren't getting their information from the newspaper as much anymore, although I'd like us to keep it in there. I also recommend that we use, include the school website as well as the school's social media sites, because I think it's very important that we give broad dissemination of this information for people to be aware of the budget's public hearing.
How about if we added something to the effect of, in the newspaper and all social media aspects? Is that what you're talking about, Ms. Smith?
Yes, and, and just for the record, we, we already have that practice in place. And, and so we're happy to continue doing that. I, I just want to caution us every time we make a change, which I'm definitely open to, to our policy, we have to rename them. So just keep that in mind. If we make this more Norfolk-specific, which we're absolutely happy to do that, we need to make that change as well.
Okay, Ms. Campson and then Ms. Basine.
Can I just add one point there? And I think it's fine to, to advertise it in as many ways as possible. The, right now, the policy is written as to what the statute requires. If you add other requirements into the policy, it becomes very important that you remember to do them. Because what will happen is then a citizen could potentially block your hearing if you haven't done all the advertisements that you, the board, have required. Right now, you have to do it in the newspaper. But if you say in the policy, you have to, for example, advertise it at the school board website and, and somehow that's not done, then you would not be able to hold your budget meeting if, if a, you know, a citizen came forward and raised that issue. So it's just, you know, a caution that whatever requirements on advertising that you add to the, the statutory ones, you be sure that you always follow them because of the risk that you might actually have to postpone a budget hearing if you hadn't done it.
So it, since it's, it's already in practice, it might not be wise to add, you know, all social media and?
I'll resend that for now.
Ms. Campson and then Ms. Basine, please.
Oh, this is just a quick question. When I, I'm, right now, we have on the screen all of these, these policies. It would be easier if there was something under each one so that I could, because I certainly haven't memorized all these letters and stuff. If I could look through and see, oh, this is the policy on this that I want to do a more careful reading. And also when we were talking about whether it, it's a change in code, which means we don't get to rewrite the code. If the code changes, then we have to change. Why can't it say code and we would know that that's something that we are, we are aligning with the state legislature? Or it would say something that has other stuff on it? Some way that when I look at, I don't know, four dozen little things here, I would know quickly which ones I need to pull out first. Because I was wading through this stuff over the weekend and, you know, some stuff, I don't really need to go into every little thing if I know it's a change from the Virginia code. And I'd be easier just to pull it out. And on the title sheet, if you also identified it, which way, which type of, of changes were made and what the name of it was, so that it's quicker to find and, and so you're not, so I'm not wasting time going in and out, in and out, trying to find which is the one that has to do with the dress code, which is the one that has to do with?
More organized, organization.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Dr. Birdsong, do you have something to say to that?
Sure, I can address this. This is the board doc screen. So what you're seeing is copies of files. So you're, you're, these are just the files that have been saved, like whatever ACZ that policy is. This is just a, a copy of the files on board docs. But if you are to, if you were to go on board docs, Ms. Campson, Mr. Clanton tried to clarify this. We have moved forward with having a policy change cover page. So every cover page, Ms. Campson, for every policy, there's a note at the end that says overview of update. And it specifically tells you if there's a statutory change or if the language has been updated, it's right there on that first page. So you can make the decision if you need to review it thoroughly or if, if, if you're fine because you know it's a statutory change. So we've done that. It's on the first page. If you were to double-click on any of these files here, the first page of each file is the policy change cover page. And, and you'll see that information that you've just requested on that first page. So you can make the decision if you want to look through the whole policy or not. Does that make?
Thank you.
This is just, you're looking at board docs right now and all of the same policies. That's what, that's what that is.
But when I click on it here and it comes up, it's going to have that particular information. So, all right, that's not quite as fast as it are being here.
You don't want to have to click on every one of them.
Exactly. That was my point. But if this is the only way you can title them, okay. It just makes it more, when you have this many, if we had half a dozen, it would be a whole different thing. But when suddenly you've got four dozen of them in front of you, it takes a lot of time.
One pager that you can click on with all of the policies on there?
Okay.
That's a question. Is, is that what the board wants?
Well, what I was saying, I wanted was it to be on the, on the title of the documents here as I look at all of these. But if that's not something that's possible, that's, I was just bringing it up as a possibility. My goal, my hope would be that eventually we will get four dozen policies at the same time.
The policy committee has met multiple times.
If I can go back down, it could certainly be added there.
Oh, okay, that would be great.
And on this page.
But that would be, that would be what would be the most helpful, I think. Thank you very much.
Ms. Basine and then Dr. Gabriel?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to give, let the board know, just as a quick refresher. You know, we, we get in February and May, we get these bad batches, these reviews. So subsequent to those, when those batches are released by VSB, you know, typically after the General Assembly has met, has convened, you know, we are, that is when we do get these larger batches of policies that are put on board docs for our review and adoption. So, so, you know, it's not every month, but there are periods throughout the year where, where you will see a, a larger number of policies on board docs.
Thank you for that clarification. I was thinking, what is the policy committee doing? Okay, thank you.
A lot, a lot, a lot, I guess.
All right, thank you.
And we're trying to, right, and we're trying to catch up, you know, but the administration has been diligently reviewing, you know, these policies that, you know, over the past couple of months. And so we're, the committee is just trying to get up to speed.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Gabriel?
I was just going to piggyback on what Ms. Campson said and I like Dr. Birdsong's suggestion about if there could be? I was just going to piggyback on what Ms. Campson said, and I like Dr. Birdsong's suggestion about if there could be the one pager that, I know we have these bulk policies, the one pager that says, you know, these are policies for discussion. These are the policies for just code changes. These are the policies that are X. I wouldn't mind that. I would find that to be helpful. And I appreciate the fact that they have the cover letter now that I think someone had alluded to earlier. Mr. Clayton perhaps about that. So that was all that I wanted to share with that, if that might help make things a little bit simple.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gabriel, Ms. Smith, and then we'll move forward.
Trying to tell anyone how to do this, but Ms. Tanner did a great job listing all of the policies on the agenda. Couldn't we just continue with that and maybe put an asterisk next to those that are code or statutory and some type of symbol that lets us know which one is which? Because we've already, we already have the listing, like we said, Ms. Tanner itemized them, the ones that were February and March. And that was how I decided which ones I wanted to look at.
Dr. Paul, please go ahead.
I just, I want to caution about just mark, just marking the ones that are code or statutory changes because some of the ones that we've recommended for second readings, they're just code changes, but the language is sensitive to our community. So we may want to do it where we're saying these are code changes, but these are the ones we're recommending second readings. Kind of like if you scroll up on Board Docs, we let you know, these are second readings because we need to make sure the community really has a chance. Because some of the code changes there, there were a lot of big code changes this last session that we've been reviewing.
Right. They're responsible for all of, for knowing all of our policies, not just the substantive changes.
We have to review every single one, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not just speaking about the code ones. I'm saying simply to group them in categories using one of the categories. And we could put some type of annotation on this note, on this list, I'm sorry, that explains which category it falls into.
I think we're saying the same thing multiple ways. And Dr. Birdsong had addressed that, you know, we'll have, we'll have Ms. Tanner, do maybe like a table of contents to categorize them on what, you know, if it's a legal change or substantive change, just to, so we can balance our time commitment when reviewing all of these and getting through them.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Bassin, is it?
Yeah, I just want to end this. So, Dr. Paul, you know, the explanation of revisions might be the most helpful thing, you know, for the board. But yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Dr. Paul, did, were you saying something?
I was just agreeing with Ms. Bassin. That's, exactly was my thought, was that they, the VSBA Publix is something similar to that, so we can use it right from there.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, moving forward, policy discussion. Okay, so before we move on to, okay, I see it's been added, okay, the approval of the personnel docket, we need to take a vote. So can I get a motion to approve our personnel docket that we discussed in closed session?
I move that we approve the personnel docket as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. And Ms. Tanner, I'm not seeing you on here.
You're not going to be able to see me.
Okay, okay, can you please, please call the vote?
Yes. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Where's Mr. Clanton?
May have stepped away for a second.
We can come back to him.
Yeah, yeah, let's just come back to him.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I'd like to report my vote is aye.
Okay. Yes, sir. Good. All right. And so on to matters of the board slash future agenda items, we're kind of calling it the same thing. Go ahead, Ms. Campson.
Thank you. I would like to remind the board that we have a account of, a school board accountability plan. Not remind you, but that's what I'll just real briefly speak to. It's a five-year plan that has absolute goals at the end of five years. However, it is written, it is revised each year based on the annual benchmarks that are set up on the way to the absolute goals that take place at the end, that take place along the way. And that needs to be reviewed, revised, updated, based on the needs assessment with the data that we collect during the school year. And that usually would be done in the summer, at our summer retreat, but because of all the other things that were happening with the pandemic and the major discussions around that, we did not get to that piece. And so I would, and I've already sent my email request to Dr. Martin, copied to Dr. Birdsong, that I would like us to remember that we did have a committee that was working on it with a part of, part of the superintendent's staff to bring some suggestions back to the board, to review what needed to be done. Especially this year where the, the annual benchmarks undergo one that had to do, many of them with the SOL testing, would be something that we needed to really look at how to handle that. So I would like the board to give consideration to letting us get our work started with that because it's already the middle of September and we need to be looking at what the benchmarks are going to be for the end of the school year. And so not to have a discussion, I'm not bringing that up for discussion, but that maybe add it to something or so that we can start moving on this as soon as possible.
Yes, it's noted. Thank you, Ms. Campson for reminding.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And thanks reminder too. If you want to email them to, anything comes up, if, you know, even after a meeting, feel free to email me. Anyone else? Dr. Gabriel?
Aye, yes, thank you, Dr. Martin. I would like for the agenda planning team and Dr. Birdsong to consider a presentation to, at the board level on our early childhood, specifically preschool data that we have. I would like to know some information regarding our enrollment trends, how we are doing as far as staffing our pre-K and where we see any needs that need to come within our pre-K program. And then embed that within the accountability plan. I agree with Ms. Campson, the accountability plan, we need to go ahead and bring that back to the surface. That's, that's a good communicating document that we have with the community. And so I would just ask for you all to consider that in agenda planning.
Absolutely, and we have talked about that. So we, it is, it is coming up. Ms. Bassin?
Yeah, so mine were, my topics were similar, is that, you know, that we collaboratively worked to develop board goals for this year in conjunction with Dr. Birdsong and her administration. And, and begin a discussion about, you know, putting together a strategic planning team and developing a strategic plan, you know, to go forward. But so those are some, some things. The next is, you know, and this is a question slash, you know, it's a topic that we typically would, would have, you know, in October, you know, which is our, our enrollment trends in general. So including pre-K on up. You know, I would like, you know, an update on where we are in terms of enrollment as we normally would, you know, after that September 30th. And I don't even know if we're being held to that September 30th deadline or if it's been, you know, changed at all as, you know, as a result of COVID or not. The last thing is, and I had requested this, I think, June, in June, as for consideration, is a review of our SRO program. And I think I've mentioned that before here in a board meeting as well. So those are, those are topics that I would like to see in a, in a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Jordan?
Not a request, but just to offer some feedback. So Dr. Martin and Dr. Birdsong and I, working on the agenda planning, we have gone back to the, the school board's accountability plan and also making sure, doing a review of the reporting dates that we had in there. You know, months, certain things, we were, like, all of y'all mentioned the enrollment. And so right now, you know, that would normally fall in October anyway. But as Dr. Birdsong has also talked about flexibility, we also are trying to make sure we align that with all the things that they have on the plate. So I just want to say that we are actively getting back to making sure we're in sync with the accountability plan, making sure that board members would know months ahead of time in terms of reports that would be coming based upon those plans, as well as taking input that we hear today to take that back to agenda planning to, to schedule it out. So I just want you to know that the things that we are talking about, they are underway and we're working closely with Dr. Birdsong to be able to put those together to, to meet the needs of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Bassin?
Yeah, so, so two other things keep in mind. So what, where are we with AdVantis? You know, because October will be here, we usually have a legislative, you know, meeting. I'm going to say meeting because I know we're not, you know, the in-person gathering with our legislators is, you know, probably not likely. But what, you know, at some point, I think maybe perhaps at the next meeting, you know, to talk about, you know, what that might look like. Because there certainly is a lot of advocacy that's needed right now for our, for public education in general and for, for Norfolk specifically. So, you know, I'd like to talk about what that might look like.
I, I'm happy to tell you, and we're inviting AdVantis strategies to give a legislative update next, at the next workshop.
Okay, great.
October. And also that would allow us some time to, you know, one, one of the things we thought of when we, we were talking about, well, also, I've asked Mr. Jordan, Mr. Clanton to continue with planning, to do a, Bring Your Legislator to School Day. But of course, our school day looks different now. And I think it's really important that they see what, just like we did today, what the typical life of a student is in the virtual learning environment and to still have, host a Zoom meeting, you know, just as we would in person, to, to have the discussion. So they're, they're working on this, you know, and potentially to be in November as we normally have had that. And also, as far as our legislative priorities, we probably want to, they're probably pretty similar to what we had last year. So we will want to review those and discuss this as a board as well. So we are working on that.
Okay, great.
And I'll just, like, if I could, we're also trying to work to get back in, taking advantage of Board Docs. You know, right now, we have a lot of our meetings that are live. But I think if we can get back in having our meetings in draft form before they're ready to go live, then it'll allow for the items that are being populated on agenda planning to be available to the board, to see them in draft format. So if anybody wanted to see, for example, what was coming up in the October meetings, they would at least be able to go and see some of the draft items that had already been firmed up based upon the calendar and the schedule. So we are working again to, to make sure that we can give the board that forward view and have a central place that if anybody has any questions about what's coming up, that one would be able to see that.
All right, Ms. Bassin, are you going to close us out today?
I'm going to. So these are, these are topics that have come up that have kind of, you know, kind of fallen off. But I, Ms. Campson mentioned earlier, Lake Taylor, the Lake Taylor School and coming back, you know, programmatically and all the things that we talked, you know, even with the naming, all of the things that we talked about related to that school and some of our other schools like Southside STEM Academy. And getting an update and review of how we're doing programmatically at that school, which, which had been requested, you know, by several board members, you know, previously. And so I think trying to get that back into the queue for future topics is important. And also importantly is St. Paul's, you know, what is happening there, what kind of outreach is happening? And, you know, I think an update on, on the St. Paul's development, you know, I think would be important for, for a future meeting as well. And that to have that also be a regular topic as well. And I would like to know a little bit about our coordinated response with the city, if there have been meetings between leadership on the school board with leadership in, you know, our city leadership and how we might be, how we might be able to improve our joint response to this pandemic. I think I, I'd like to see that become a priority for both entities. So I'd like to hear more about that.
Okay. Thank you. So, great discussion. Sorry we went over, but I think this was important. And so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Of course you do.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Tanner, can you please call the question through?
Actually, is it already on agenda?
Can we sing him happy birthday?
I don't need that one, but I'm just saying, isn't a German already on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then we, it doesn't require a motion, just you to call it.
Sorry, I'm having trouble again. I'm having like, I'm getting a black block down here.
Stitch a gavel.
Stitch a gavel and say meeting adjourned.
Look my screen. All right, meeting adjourned. Happy birthday, Carlos. I don't think anyone.
Happy birthday, Carlos. Happy birthday.
Thanks, everyone. And thank you, administration, for all the hard work you've done. I really appreciate all the information that you presented today. I think it really good, gave a good view of what's been going on. So, thank you and thanks to all our teachers.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.